Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tim and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good morning and welcome to the October 13th city council meeting. We have a lot of business to conduct today. It's going to be a full agenda, but we are going to get started the way we always do, and that is by asking for God's blessings and His presence in this room. So I'm going to invite Pastor Joseph Baker from St. James AME Church. Pastor Baker, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you.
Hit that button, sir. I think I turned you off by accident.
Good morning, Mayor. That just means you have the power. Good morning to each and every one of you. I am so delighted to be here, and let me just say, be encouraged. I know this is not an easy time to lead. And especially Mayor Skip, I'm gracious and thankful to have you, as well as the other counselors in this community doing the job that you are doing. I am so grateful and so thankful for the work that you all are doing here in this great city of Columbus and surrounding communities. Let us pray. God, we say thank you now for this opportunity to come and to lift you up in this council meeting. We would not be here except it be but by you. We ask right now that you will continue to bless the counselors, bless the mayor, bless the city manager, bless each and every one in their places that you have called them to for this time and this COVID-19 time. These are the leaders, the God that you have called for this purpose. We ask that you work with them, guide them. Let them not lean into their own understanding, but let them have an understanding of your work, your will, your way for the citizens of this community. Guide them. When they get to points that they just don't understand, and when they have problematic issues that are brought to them by the citizens of this community, help them to be that resolved. Help them to be that calm. Help them to be the resource that is needed to make sure that we are doing what you have guided us and what you're guiding us to do. This is your humble servant's prayer. Let every heart say amen.
Pastor Baker, thank you so much. And listen, we know, because we talk frequently, we know that you keep this city and this country and this council in your prayers, and we thank you for that. We also thank you for what you and your congregation do throughout this community. So thank them for us, for sharing you with us this morning, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Huff.
Pastor Baker. Good morning. I couldn't let this opportunity get by. This is my pastor. I just wanted to acknowledge him this morning. Thank you for being here and to let everyone know you have done a phenomenal job since COVID came to town. You were doing a phenomenal job anyway, but since COVID came to town in March, he's done a phenomenal job working with the congregation and also his children. His children have helped to put us together with Facebook and YouTube and everything. So thanks to the family, thanks to you, and thank you for being here this morning. I just wanted to let you know I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Counselor Huff. Thank you. And Mayor, we were able to work with an organization to register over 1,300 persons during this particular voting cycle. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you, Pastor. All right, if you would, please stand, and I'll lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. I'll entertain a minute to approve the minute, a minute, a motion to approve the minutes. Mayor Pro Tim bailed me out by moving it. Counselor House, second. Any discussion, any edits? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. We've got a few updates, but before we get to that, we have some of the, a couple of the members of the family of former Mayor Robert Portishev, and there is a resolution being offered up by this council to honor him. And so I'm going to ask Counselor House, if you'd hit your button, sir, we'll get your light turned on, ask him to read this into the record. And if, Rob, if you and Meg are here, if you would come to the podium. And if there are any other members of the family here, please bring them as well.
Thank you, Mayor, and certainly a special welcome to the Portishev family, and it is a great honor to be able to read this resolution into the record. Whereas former Columbus, Georgia Mayor Robert S. Portishev died on September 24, 2020, and whereas he earned a BA in Political Science from the Citadel in 1954, a JD from Tulane University Law School in 1957, an MA in International Relations from Boston University Graduate Program in Berlin, Germany in 1967, and attended the Hague Academy of International Law in the Netherlands in preparation for a military and subsequent civilian career that focused on serving others. Whereas in 1955, he was commissioned as a Second Lieutenant in the Infantry Branch of the United States Army, he was reassigned to the Judge Advocate General Score. A 1976 graduate of the US Army War College, he served a total of 24 years, retiring as a Colonel in 1979. He was decorated with the Legion of Merit with two oak leaf clusters, the Bronze Star Medal, and Vietnam ribbon with four battle stars. And during his military career, because of his expert legal acumen, he was assigned to work on the biggest cases of the time in which he served, but during this, he never lost sight of what he considered his primary role, which was to take care of soldiers. And whereas Robert S. Portishev was appointed as legal counsel to the Secretary of the Army and served the needs of all soldiers by helping to shape army policy. In 2012, the Army War College Foundation named Colonel Portishev an outstanding alumnus in recognition of his wide-ranging service to his community after his retirement from active duty. And whereas Colonel Portishev served on the Columbus, Georgia City Council from 1994 to 2002, helping all citizens of the community he had come to love while concurrently serving for Benning and his beloved soldiers. And whereas he was elected Mayor of Columbus, Georgia in 2002, served a four-year term and maintained a focus on community-based programs, as well as strengthening the relationship between the city and Fort Benning. During this time, he made great contributions to the joint military and civilian communities of Columbus, Georgia and Fort Benning, appointing first a fellow soldier and later the first African American to the city manager position, while knowing that doing so would be at his own political peril. And whereas his service as Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, Robert S. Portishev found continued success as a practicing lawyer, helping countless citizens and soldiers living in the city he once led, as well as advocating for many soldiers in the area. His continued interest in the betterment of the city, as well as his contributions to the Veterans Action Committee, has a continued impact to this day. And whereas he served as past president of the Chattahoochee Council Boy Scouts of America, past president of the Chattahoochee Valley Association of the United States Army, past president of the Columbus Symphony Orchestra, a member of the Board of Directors of the Springer Opera Arts Association, past president of the Anne Elizabeth Shepherd Home, and member of the Kiwanis Club and Columbus Bar Association. And whereas the Council of Columbus, Georgia desires to support the naming of a Veterans Administration Clinic in Columbus, Georgia after former Mayor Robert S. Portishev as recognition of his service to our community and our country. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby express our support for and request that a Veterans Administration Clinic in Columbus, Georgia be named in honor of former Mayor Robert S. Portishev as a fitting memorial for his service to the Columbus, Georgia community, our nation's soldiers, and our country. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is there a motion? This has already been approved, hasn't it?
No.
Has not? Have they are motion to approve?
I move that we approve it.
And seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I just want to say on behalf of our family, we're deeply honored, and my dad loved Columbus. He loved the people. He loved the soldiers, and we so much appreciate this fitting memorial to him. Thank you.
Counselor House, thank you for reading that and coming up with the idea to try to name that clinic after Mayor Portishev. There will be, and you may want to mention, there will be a, I think, a virtual memorial service coming up at the end of this month.
Yes, Mayor, you're right. On the 30th of October, there'll be a ceremony that people will be able to, should be able to watch virtually. Because of the COVID-19 distancing requirements, it's a by invitation event, but there should be a large crowd anyway at the National Anthem Museum Parade Field.
Absolutely. We want to thank the family for allowing the community this opportunity to memorialize your dad. Great, great man. All right? And before we move on, while we've got Counselor House there, we want to make sure we wish him a belated happy birthday. Had his birthday yesterday. I think Mayor Pro Tim Allen's got one sneaking around the corner, so we may have to lift him up next time. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Portishev, before you guys leave, I just want to take this opportunity to say to you, I think on behalf of all of us, how much your dad meant to us. What Counselor House read was very formalized, but Uncle Bob was really one of those that you could be yourself with. I have to tell the rest of you counselors that I was his favorite. He told me that every time he saw me. But we do appreciate all of the things that he did for this community and his enthusiasm and his love, and we would like for you to give your mom our best. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Counselor. Well said. And you probably were his favorite. All right, want to give a quick COVID-19 update. Won't drag it out because we do have a busy meeting, but I will tell you that the numbers continue to look promising, although they have ticked up a little bit. Hospitalization rates have gone up just a little bit over the last couple of days. Not significantly enough, I think, for us to be overly concerned, but reminder that this pandemic's not over. The fact that our numbers are low is due to nothing other than the efforts of the community to try to hold down the spread. Your efforts at social distancing, your efforts at wearing masks, your efforts at washing your hands, and your efforts at listening to your body when you don't feel good staying home, that's what's doing this. It isn't magic. It didn't just go away. It's simply because you're doing what you have been recommended to do from the CDC and from the Health Department, and we are very, very grateful that you continue to take it seriously. Our challenge to you is, don't let up. As we go through the holiday season, I know the city manager and deputy city manager are going to give an update a little bit later on about an alternative, but we urge you to be smart. This is one year out of your children's lives, and we want them to be able to have a fantastic Halloween. We're doing our part to try to make sure that happens, but we urge you to be careful and be responsible. Let them go door to door if candy is placed outside, but don't, excuse me, let them go house to house if candy is placed outside where they can easily pick it up, but don't go door to door where they have to take it from somebody else's hand that's inside. So again, thank you for what you've been doing, but do not ease up. We need to continue this, particularly through the flu season, through the winter months. And it seems kind of strange to still be giving a census update because the census was supposed to close out two weeks ago. As of today, I haven't heard any update in the last 24 hours, but it's my understanding that the census is still collecting data through the 31st. There is a court case, and there is a challenge, so this is subject to change. But while we've got this extra time, we need to double down on trying to remind people in our districts, people in our neighborhoods, to please fill that census out. There is, the impact from this, we can't blame it on COVID, because if we don't fill it out, we don't fill it out. Doesn't matter why, but the impact from this can be devastating. It can last 10 years, and we're stuck with the numbers that we get, and we're stuck with the amount of federal tax dollars that you have already paid. You've already paid this, and it's not going to come back to us if we don't get an accurate count. So please, we urge you to take advantage of these extra few days. All right? Next up, I want to bring up our auditor, John Redman, to give an audit report.
Thank you, Mayor Henderson, members of council, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney. Today I'm going to speak on an audit of the grants that the city receives. This audit was authorized by city council on May 26 of this year. Background a little bit is the city's had a long history of applying for and receiving grants, and of course, we have a process where the city council authorizes the request and acceptance of grants before they're formally made by departments and others in the city. And then the department applies for and administers the grant. But I want to express the importance of grants to our city and to our community, because these grants bring in extra money, some from the federal government, some from states, some from foundations and other sources, that enable us to enrich the programming that we offer in the city and accomplish things that we might not be able to do with just the tax dollars that we receive. The grant accountant then records and tracks the receipts and disbursements of the grants fund. That completes that cycle. The scope is that all active grants were reviewed, the grant purpose was identified, the applicant or director was identified, and the use of grant funds were reviewed. Grant monies used, some were used for compensation, and were reviewed for compliance with city pay plans. Findings, we noted that some grant funds were used to fund grant positions, which is appropriate, some grant funds were used to compensate the applicant employee, which is not as appropriate, and then some grant funds were used for the operating expenses and implementation of the grant program. I reviewed the charter on this matter for the compensation approval, and city charter section 218.7 places responsibility for examination, evaluation, and approval of all compensation with the city manager. The pay plan was reviewed to determine the compensation levels for the affected employees, and findings reveal compensation anomalies that had not been presented to the city manager for examination and evaluation and approval. Our recommendations, one, that the city manager perform the examination, evaluation, and approval process for the grant-related compensation issues, that the city manager direct or take remedial and forward action consistent with his determination and decision on said grants, and that establish and install internal controls necessary to alert the city manager of any discretionary compensation inconsistent with adopted pay plan, and that city council should adopt and support the city manager with this corrective action. The audit response, and I'm going to give it in abbreviated form, I think Mr. Hughley's going to have a more detailed explanation afterwards, but that all grant positions will be classified on the city's pay plan. The grant positions are not eligible to receive additional grant supplements. Grant positions are not eligible to receive additional grant supplements, and grant positions identified for reclassification will be sent to the CSU consultant for review and recommendation. Also, other general government position or positions identified for reclassification will be sent to our CSU consultant for review and recommendation. He's going to also recommend some salary adjustments, but these will be made pending, obviously, city council approval. Are there any questions regarding the grant audit?
Doesn't appear so, John.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I think the city manager had, did you want to make? Okay, I guess I do need to turn you on, don't I?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under the updates on my agenda, updates and presentations, I've got our HR director scheduled to respond to the audit findings, the internal audit of grant positions, and so I am going to ask her to come and present that response at this time.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. I do have a brief presentation from the Finance Department and the Human Resources Department in response to the internal auditor's audit of grants.
Staff should be loading the internal audit of grant positions update that's on the city manager's agenda. And while they're doing that, Mr. Mayor and Council, let me just say, thank you to our team, CCGTV, Information Technology, the Civic Center. COVID placed us here in this building, and we had to reshape, reform, and redesign this floor to accommodate our meetings and not deny the citizens of Columbus the opportunity to come in and have some normalcy related to city council meetings and other meetings. And they transformed this building. They ordered equipment, such as the big screen behind you, and it's a COVID expense, these monitors, these chairs, they have reconfigured and made this room, this building, the Civic Center, similar to the regular council meeting where we assemble for council meeting at the City Services Center. And even today, this is the first time that we've used a big screen, and so the lighting may not be perfect. Things may not work. All go perfect today, but I say that to say to you that the people on the cameras, these are, this is not their profession. And IT and all that they're doing, it's not what they do. This is other duties and responsibilities as required. And so they have stepped in, they've filled in, and I'm running out of words to say if they don't get that video up. But they have stepped in, and they have made it comfortable for us and for the citizens, and it's televised, and we're transparent. We are open, and our citizens are able. I remember when we first got into COVID, and we were doing it virtually, and they couldn't be on public agenda, and we couldn't do certain things, and the citizens didn't like that. And together, we figured out a way to fix that, and I believe we have. And so I do want to say thank you to the team for a job well done, and they have the PowerPoint up now, and I'm glad. So with that, our HR director.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So in response to the audit that was conducted by the internal auditor, our specific response, our being Finance and Human Resources, our specific response has to do with those positions that are grant-funded, and that's what we want to be able to respond to today. So the internal auditor has given an overview already of the grants for the city, but I want to just slightly just review here real quickly in terms of the city applying for a number of grants. The departments, the process for those grants, grants and grants positions, the department identifies that grant opportunity, city council authorizes it, and the department makes application for a grant, and then the department receives it and implements the grant once it's awarded. Here is just a brief listing of some of those departments that on a regular basis receives grants. From the Community Reinvestment Department, from Metro Transit Planning, Fire and the MS, Police, WIA, JGPA, Superior Courts, and other departments regularly apply for, receive, and implement grants. So in terms of the scope of audit for this particular response here from Finance and HR, it's limited to those grant-receiving agencies that have grant-funded positions. So there are two particular areas that we focused on where there are actually grant-funded positions. The Accountability Court Program, which is housed under Superior Court, and you see there are a listing of those grants that are received by, under the Accountability Grant Program. And then lastly, we looked at the Solicitors' General Office and the District Attorney's Office, specifically the Victim Witness Program. We'll speak real briefly about the Solicitors' General Program. There is no recommendation for the District Attorney's Victim Witness Program, and we'll review that very briefly. And so the grants audit that, in terms of the recommendations from the internal auditor, we agree, and basically, as John has already talked about, is recommended, of course, that the city manager would approve any compensation for those grant positions, and that any determination made for those grants positions will be approved by the city manager. And council, we're requesting also that council adopt and approve any recommendations for corrective action made by the city manager. So how the grant positions are paid for, grant positions are classified positions in the UGA's pay plan. Grant-funded positions, they may be totally funded by a grant, or they may, there may be a combination of grant funds and general fund monies to pay for that grant positions. Grant-funded positions are considered temporary position, meaning that the position is funded as long as the grant is awarded. So this next slide here may be a little bit difficult for you to read, so I won't, and we won't go over it in detail, but this is a listing of the various position titles that are either fully grant-funded or grant-funded in part. that are either fully grant-funded or grant-funded in part. And these include the Accountability Court Program that I mentioned to you earlier out of Superior Court, as well as the Victim Witness Program grants in the Solicitor's General's Office and in the DA's office. So just to go over this particular slide a little bit, you do have a handout. You see the position title there, and then if you look at the column where you see the total pay, what we've done is combined the general fund where that particular grant may be paid in part from the general fund, and then there may be a grant supplement. And then we provided the total pay there for each of those positions. And then finally, we've had a recommended adjusted pay for each of those positions. And you see in the last column, there is a salary difference. The recommended adjusted pay column is what Human Resources and Finance is recommending for all of those positions. And that recommendation is based on the UGA position classification for each of those positions. What that does is bring those positions in line with the classification for each of those positions, whether it's a grade 14, a grade 18, or grade 20. It brings those positions in line with their position, UGA position classification. And so the proposed amendments to the grants policy, there is an existing city manager-approved of grants policy. So we are recommending that this grants policy, which is on your agenda today, be approved. And basically, the recommendation is that all grants positions be classified in the city's adopted pay plan, and that pay grades and salary ranges will be established for each of those grants positions. That the grants positions not be eligible, that the grant position not be eligible to receive any additional grant supplement outside of its normal, regular pay. That salaries for grants employees may be increased when council approves pay adjustments for general government employees, and that there is funding available in that particular grant. We are also recommending that funding for grant positions be at 100% grants-funded or a combination of grant funds and general fund money. Exceptions to this policy must be approved by the city manager, and already have been stated, this particular code by our internal auditor, Section 2-18.1. And the administration of grants, as they are now, it is the responsibility of that grant-receiving department or agency. So real briefly in summary, in terms of those positions that are grant-funded, either in part or in whole, is that all grants positions will be classified in the UGA city's pay plan, that grant positions are not eligible to receive additional grant supplements, that funding for grant positions may be 100% grant-funded or a combination of grant funds and general fund monies. There were grant positions that have been identified in this review process that have already been sent to CSU for review and recommendation. Those positions include a custody investigator position, which is currently a grade 16. We're thinking CSU, the recommendation is for a grade 20, and we'll see what CSU says about it. There is a victim advocate investigator position that's a grade 16, recommendation to a grade 18. Also not listed in this particular slide presentation, there is a victim advocate position that's a grade 14, recommendation is for it to go to a grade 18. And again, as we reviewed this particular process, we looked at the Grants Compliance Accountant Position, which is housed in the Finance Department, which does a lot of the oversight for these grants that are administered. And that particular position is currently classified as a grade 19, and we're recommending that it be reclassified to a grade 20. It's also under review right now by CSU. So based on the recommendations that we received from CSU and the Finance and HR recommendation, now, we are recommending these to be approved by city council. And so that is our presentation. But we are available to answer any questions, myself and the Finance Director.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, let me just say that we are not asking you to take any action on what you just saw today. That will come back to you in the form of an ordinance after she's gotten her information back from Columbus State University. But what I am asking you to approve today is a grant management policy update, and that is listed as item number 11 on my agenda. So what you just saw, all of the pay grades, positions, will come back to you in an ordinance. And there will be a first read and a second read on it, and anyone who wants to speak on first reading would have an opportunity to do so. What I'm asking you to vote on today is a Grants Management Policy Update. And so while they can answer any questions about what you just heard, when they're done, I would like to go ahead and ask your approval on the Grant Management Policy Update, which is number 11 on my agenda. Any questions on what you just heard from the HR Director?
All right. We've got a couple of councillors that have questions. Councillor Thomas?
Ms. Howell, I want to make sure that I understand your terminology. You talk about all grant positions. Are those employees, regular employees of the city, are they there only because of the grant? Or exactly what do you mean by grant positions? I know that there are some employees, regular employees of the city, that also help administer grants. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that I understand what we're talking about here.
Sure. The employees listed in the chart that you've been provided, they are, you would consider, regular employees. Some of them are paid from the general fund, is a combination of general fund and grant money, or, and some of them are totally grant-funded. Totally grant-funded, meaning that the position exists as long as there is grant monies available to fund that position.
And if they are regular employees of the city, probably they were employed before the grant was administered, right?
In some cases, in some cases. And grant-funded positions, when the person is hired, these are considered temporary positions, again, because the position is funded as long as the grant is funded. So, but to answer your question, some employees, but very few, are, were on payroll prior to being a part of a grant. Many of them were hired because there was grant funding available for that position.
And those temporary employees who are funded by these grants are funded in the same way that other temporary employees are funded, if I remember correctly? They do not get, well, tell me what they do not receive. Do they receive insurance? Do they receive retirement? You know, all of those kinds of things, other than salary? What do they receive? What financial compensation do they receive from the city, other than salary?
Sure. Temporary positions typically, if it's a full-time temporary position, that position will be offered health benefits. That's required by the Affordable Care Act. So we have to offer a full-time temporary position, health benefits. However, those positions typically are not, they are not in the pension, and they typically do not receive other benefits such as leave.
Such as?
Leave benefits, annual leave.
Okay, okay. Okay, I just want to make sure that I know who we're talking about here as we are making some of these, some of these changes. Thank you.
All right, councillor Huff?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Excuse me. In addition to piggybacking with councillor Thomas, if the, the full-time employees that are part of the grant program, do they take on any extra duties when these grants come in?
Their position is a classified position. For example, if it's a grade 18 as a grant coordinator, that's the full-time position. That position is classified. There are no extra duties. That position is 100% a pay grade 18, and that's what that person would do.
Okay, so according to the presentation, we'll have some that in the adjustment process will be, will receive a reduction in pay due to the new program?
That it, due to our recommendation, yes, some of those, in fact, all of those that are listed on the spreadsheet that's provided, will have an adjustment in their pay.
Okay, and have you all sat down with them? They understand, or this is first time out?
No, sir. The Finance Director and I have met with every agency involved, the Accountability Court Program coordinators, the judge involved that oversees these particular grants. We've had conversations with all of them, Juvenile Court, Superior Court, we've had conversations with all of them.
Okay, they have a good understanding?
Yes, to my, to my, yes, yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Davis?
I welcome and applaud the information and the report that was given to us today. I do, the city manager, I'm, I mean, I'm in full support of a, of a policy that covers this, because I think, you know, transparency is the key here. And a lot of times, you know, we don't get the complete story, especially during the budget sessions, unless we pry with questions and really try to get down, get down in the weeds and figure out what's going on. Sometimes we just don't get the whole picture, and we don't understand, you know, how the money's flowing, where it's coming from. Now, if we ask the right questions, always, I believe, you know, I can say this in confidence, that our Finance Department and others are able to get that information, or they go back and look at something that gets us that information. But it's sometimes hard to, to understand when requests are coming our way, especially, again, during the, the budget session by various departments. General Government's one thing, but when it comes from elected officials and other departments, that we don't, you know, there's kind of a, a distance between the operations. We, we just need to understand that a little bit. It's just good, helps us make good decisions when it comes to the finances of our government. And again, I think transparency, this is all, to me, it's transparency, and it gets it out on the table, and it's accountability, and the citizens can feel good about the way their financial matters with the city are being handled.
Thank you, sir. All right, the city manager had asked for consideration of item 11.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to make a comment about what you've just heard, and, I can't hear. Let me say that, you know, when I just do a back-of-the-sheep calculation on grants that we receive for Metro Planning, CDBG, Home, and Workforce Investment, just a simple, quick calculation, I calculate $17.3 million in that simple calculation. So that doesn't include any of the grants that we get from Georgia DOT, Federal Highway, any of the $34 million for COVID, or any other special grants that are one-time, such as what you will hear from Nancy Boren today with elections and registration. So just a simple calculation is $17.3 million. And so for those listening and wondering, you know, why are they talking about what they're talking about? Employees, you know, we've got employees in a couple of different categories. Some employees are hired to fill a 100% grant position, and I'll just say drug coordinator, for example, and I'm just making that up. But that person would typically be paid based on their duties and responsibilities that are similar to other positions in the government. Let's say, other similar position may be a pay grade 16, so that's what they get. And so that position is only there for as long as that grant is available. And so when the grant goes away, the position goes away, and that's how we bring it to you. That person that I'm using as an example should not operate, as the internal auditor referenced it, as a freelance grants writer, and just continue to write grants and grants and grants because they're good at it to enhance or adjust their salary with no ceiling. In other words, sky's the limit. If I can write enough grants, I could make $300,000, but I'm a pay grade 16. There's no ceiling. Just keep writing the grants, and just keep enhancing your pay. And so we have some positions that you saw on that screen that have done exactly that with no ceiling. And then we have employees who are hired into a specific pay grade, and they are paid based on that basis. And so that employee could go and write as many grants as they want, and their pay is fixed. They had a pay grade, let's say, 19, because they're not operating as a freelance grants writer. And so that person is paid based on a defined pay grade. And so what we have and what we're trying to fix is that we have some people in this government who are in a defined pay grade, a pay grade 16, and that's all they should be paid based on that, a pay grade 16, a fixed pay with a ceiling. And they treat it just like any other merit system employee in a pay grade. But we've got some who are in those pay grades, and then they've gone and written grants, and they just supplement and adjust their pay in addition to being a full-time city employee in a specific pay grade. And they have no ceiling. And so we are trying to put some control measures in place and make sure people are all treated equally and fairly, and so we need to fix it. And so that's what all of this is about, and the HR Director and Finance Director will be coming back to you with an ordinance that will allow us to get these things under control and, and have a way, a policy, as we're asking you to vote for today, in going forward. So number 11 on my agenda is Grants Management Policy Update, not voting on what you just saw on the screen from the HR Director. This is about policy. And so I'm asking for approval of this resolution to update the city's grant management policy. Revisions to the current policy are needed in order to ensure compliance with local, state, and federal rules and regulations pertaining to grants administration and oversight. Minor policy revisions include requiring pay plan classifications for all grant-funded positions, prohibition of pay supplements using grant funds that I just described, and allow, and allowing adopted pay increases as approved by council is what they would receive if grant funding is available. And so I'm asking you to approve a resolution on this policy today that we can go forward and make, and know that all things are being done in accordance with federal, state, and local requirements, and they are all consistent, and everybody's treated fairly and equal. And that's the policy I'm asking you to approve today.
All right, who was the motion made? Councillor Barnes made a motion, second from councillor Tucker. To the motion, councillor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, are you going to bring back to us the actual language of this policy to vote on, or is this, is this it?
Yes, ma'am. Well, it's in, you should have an attachment there. Councillor House is saying yes, but it should be, you know.
Well, I hadn't been able to find it yet, but I'll, I'll continue to look. I just want to make sure that we, we, as councillors, see the actual language of the change in the policy.
Absolutely, and so, and we'll, we'll go. Absolutely, and so, and, and we'll, we'll go over that again when we bring the ordinance back as well. We'll just highlight the policy as you, on the first reading.
I don't have a problem with the policy in general.
I understand.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, there is a motion and a second to approve the policy. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any, oh, yes, sir, Counselor Davis?
Well, I think that Counselor Thomas's point is what she's basically saying, she'd like to see it first, but if we're approving the policy today, I don't even know what the policy's gonna read, I just know what the city manager just said, but there may be some changes and amendments that need to take place as well upon council members being able to see it. I think what the motion should be, that we're in support of it, and that we're moving forward and giving him the authority to go ahead and put something together, but we still need to, to take a look at it before it's totally approved. Am I, am I missing something?
I'm fine with what you just explained, and when we bring back the ordinance, we'll include the texture in there that will allow you to make any changes to the policy that you'd like to make.
All right, well, with that, with that being the case, do we need to rescind the motion to approve today, and, and just hold it in abeyance until we bring the actual recommended changes along with the details of the policy if they have not seen it? Counselor Thomas, parliamentarian?
I, I do, I would feel a lot more comfortable if I had the actual policy before I voted on it. I'm, I'm in favor of adopting a policy, but I want to see the policy before I adopt it, so.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, if I might add to that, I mean, I'm, I'm in support, the city manager, I'm in support of it too, but I, I think what we've done, and we, which, which I think is a good practice, is that the city attorney mails us these ordinances in advance, so we can look at them, and then it, you know, we can comment on them. I, I think it'd be good that everybody just has an opportunity to comment, or potentially amend or add to what's been given us, so.
Well, and, and Mayor, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with delaying and then getting voted on the policy at the next meeting.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we tabled this item until we get a copy of the policy from the city manager.
All right, so a second? A second by the mayor pro tem. Mr. City Attorney, did you have something to add?
Well, just, the grant management policy is a nineteen-page document. It is attached to number eleven on the city manager's electronic agenda, but if you want to bring that item back the same time the ordinance comes on first reading, that's fine.
Well, and, and I'll bring it back. It'll still be listed separately on my agenda. You'll have the ordinance, and then you'll have the grant management policy, and so we'll ask you to vote on that policy as, at, during the, at the same meeting that you do the first reading on the ordinance.
And Mr. City Manager, if you get that to us, Mr. City Attorney, before the council meeting, I think we probably can adopt both the policy and
Sure.
At the, at the same meeting.
Sure.
All right, there's a motion, a second to rescind, or to delay that, that motion. We've got to the motion. Counselor Tucker?
Just to clarify, I'm looking at the agenda packet on our website.
Mm-hmm.
On the item number eleven, it says grants management policy update. You have two attachments. The one attachment actually has the policy resolution, and the second one has the grants management policy twenty-one-page document. Is that what we're voting on?
Yes.
What we, we already received in our packet on Friday?
Absolutely, absolutely. So it's there, but we'll send it to you again.
Counselor Barnes?
So do I need to withdraw my motion?
No, I think we can handle it just by approving the motion to delay it, and with that in mind, all those in favor of delaying until we can get this sent back out, say aye. Any opposed, say no. All right, well, that'll be delayed. And I have a request on behalf of the folks up here in the front. We, this is an awesome screen, but it is full of air, and it's got something that has to run and hum loudly while it's pumping the air in there. So if I don't respond to you, speak up a little louder, because we're having trouble, particularly when the microphones are on. We don't really hear too well up on this front table, so until we can get that fixed electronically, y'all shout. All right? Anything else, Mr. City Manager? All right, and that's, that's all for my agenda. We'll move into the city attorney's agenda. Mr. City Attorney?
All right, Mayor, thank you. We've got another business item we're gonna need to delay, the first reading hearing for Point Eighty-One Acres at Seventeen Hundred Tenth Avenue. Planning inadvertently advertised this as Tenth Street, so we're gonna need to bring this back. I know there are people, of course, you have the applicant and some neighbors that are concerned about it, that want to comment, but this will be brought back on November tenth. Has to be another ad running the paper. That should be a morning meeting, Mayor, at nine o'clock, but we need a delay of that first item.
All right, do we need a motion to delay?
Yes, sir, that'd be good for the record.
There's a motion by the mayor pro tem to delay, seconded by Counselor Tucker. All in favor of the delay, please say aye. Any opposing, say no. All right, if we could, let's call up anybody that is here to speak on that, because if they've made the trip down here, we, I think we owe them the, we owe them our ears.
That's fine. If, Mr. McKenna, you want to step up first, and if we're gonna hear from people?
Before you get started, Mr. McKenna, Counselor Huff?
I just wanted to verify, the Seventeen Hundred Tenth Street, or is it Seventeen Hundred Tenth Avenue?
Tenth Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Mr. McKenna.
Good morning. Is that loud enough?
Yeah.
I'm Rob McKenna, I'm representing Amazing Development Partners in connection with this rezoning for Seventeen Hundred Tenth Avenue. That is the former Sonovus Bank building. I guess it still says Sonovus Bank on it, but it hasn't been open in a while, over near the hospital. And we're looking to rezone this property from RO to GC. I just want to point out, there are a couple of properties nearby. There's a Wells Fargo, I believe it was, bank building that's to the north of this property, that is currently zoned GC. Property to the south, which is across, across Seventeenth Street, is currently zoned GC. That is owned by, I believe, Columbus Sign Company. And this property is, will be redeveloped as a gas station convenience store. The existing bank building will continue to be used, and the applicant has agreed with planning to cut down on the parking lot on the east side of the property, which is closest to the neighborhood. So they'll cut back the parking area there, the pavement, and replant that with evergreen trees, and build a fence to buffer the neighborhood from any activity on the site. In addition, this, this developer puts in security cameras, both inside and outside, that will be directly accessible by the Columbus Police Department, so they can monitor any activity that's going on out in the parking lot. They have agreed to use lighting that would stay on the property, and I know there was some indication that they were worried about signage. I think Counselor Woodson mentioned signage to me at one point. This particular company does not put a lot of signs outside. They're gonna use monument signs. There'll be two, one at each entrance, and no other real signs except for the name of the business on, on the building. So I'm gonna keep it brief, just because I know we're gonna delay this, I'm gonna come back and do this again, but does anybody have any questions? Okay.
Doesn't appear so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McKenna. Mr. Denson, you can give your name and address for the record, and if anybody wants to speak today, instead of coming back November tenth, that's fine.
Good morning, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Joe Denson. I work for Charlie Gower, who owns the adjacent property. I do not feel that a gas station convenience store is compatible to the neighborhood. The neighborhood has been based on medical, and banks, and office buildings. We would like to see it stay an office building. That's what Mr. Gower plans on using his property for, and be compatible with the community. Piedmont is on record, I believe y'all may have it, with a letter, that they object to it, because they do not believe it is compatible with the support doctors and other medical facilities that are in the area. Some of the people that I've gone around the neighborhood and talked to is Mr. Ralph Franks, he's a folk artist, he's, would be right across the street. The lights for a gas station service station would change his life, difficulty sleeping, difficulty living the life that he's grown accustomed to live. Couple of houses down from him is Miss Diane Williams, who is here. She is very upset. She's worked thirty years to pay for her house, and she said there's no way that she'll ever be able to move. Couple of houses behind on Seventeenth Street is Miss Betty Sue Aiken. Miss Betty Sue Aiken has lived in that neighborhood for over eighty-five years, lived in the same house for fifty-six years, and she just can't imagine having to deal with a gas station convenience store, the people that would be going and coming twenty-four hours a day. There's a Mr. Lopez, that his beautiful house that he's remodeled, he's remodeling another house next to him to be used for rental purposes. He does not want it. Mr. Lopez has gone through the neighborhood, he could not be here today, and he has gotten a petition with names on it, that I can furnish to you if you'd like it, of other people in the neighborhood that are against it. One issue that I would like to question or address is the cameras. I know a lot of businesses in Columbus that would love to have cameras, and have somebody pay to the police department in nine-one-one to monitor them. If that is available to the community, I would like to, to know, and know how to get cameras set up on different businesses that I, I'm affiliated with, to have the police department monitor the cameras. But I urge you to deny this request. I'd urge you to deny it, because it is not compatible to the community that they're wanting to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denson. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Denson?
Yes, ma'am, you speak.
It's my understanding by, from a, an email to counselors from Piedmont, that they have withdrawn their objection.
I was copied with an email with the letter, I was not copied with that email. I, I cannot.
I believe that, that is the current status, that Piedmont has withdrawn their objection.
Thank you for that information, but this is the first I've had it.
Thank you.
All right, doesn't appear to be any more questions.
Anybody else want to speak today? All right.
Ralph? Mr. Ralph Franks would like to speak.
Give your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hello, everybody. You know, I live directly across the street from the bank, and that's interesting that Piedmont would withdraw their objection. I guess they need the business, you know, robberies and whatever activity might go on that happens at many other gas stations in town, has happened. The last state bank was open, I went in and told them, I said, y'all want a good laugh? And they said, yeah, sure. And I said, well, now I get to worry about who's gonna move in across the street from me. But anyway, they've been, have been really good neighbors. If anybody could have complained about me, it would have been them. But I'm a real tolerant person, and, you know, all the noise, every time I Black Hawk, by the way, my place is in direct flight path, going to the hospital from Fort Benning, and I don't, I wish I just, I don't have my phone with me anyway, but, you know, between helicopters and ambulances, and that's just part of life, but, the reason I'm speaking now is on behalf of Miss Williams and Miss Aikens. They've been on the corner, on the block for a really long time, and life's full of change, you know? Bob Dylan said it best, you know, you either go along with the program, or you sink like a stone. But I'm dragging my feet, but I, I would ask the counselors to vote against this. You know, people got a right to make a living, they want to open a business, the bank wants to sell the property. Let them put a dispensary in there, I would be one of their best customers, and God bless America and Columbus. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, if Director Jones would come up.
Director Jones, there, there seems to be, you know, I know, I hear the concerns, but there seems to be already general commercial already in that neighborhood. As a matter of fact, the lots, could be the subject lot that was being talked about, or the lot next to it, plus, including, I'm, I'm looking at this, I guess the gentleman that just expressed his objection to it, but there's, there's general commercial already there, the, the, correct me if I'm wrong, but the truth and reality is, anybody can sell those properties today, and there's nothing the city can do. Somebody can come in and utilize it, whatever goes in that category, am I right?
Yes, sir, for whatever category you're talking about, in terms of, particularly with general commercial, if it's already zoned for that, it's legal, and they can go forward from that point on.
So if anybody chooses to sell that property, it probably won't even get to us, they can just develop it under a general category permission?
If we're talking about the, the property in question here today, that's true. Unless you put a condition on there for particular use, or limit to a certain use, that's the only way you could really control it.
Well, I did, I don't know how long this property's been on the market, but I did ride by the other day, and it does, it looks like there's a lot of properties for sale right now, you know, including some of the, the properties who have objected, they're, they're for sale. I don't know what the use is gonna be, but, you know, when you start seeing that, unless somebody, I don't know the time that these properties have been on the market, but unless somebody steps up to the plate, I mean, you're really confronted with some kind of use there, or, I don't see anybody going in a bank building, the bank's set up the way it is, I mean, the banks are just gonna sit there for a long time, and, I mean, if they were gonna be doctor's offices, I, I would think that the way we see things, it would already been purchased and being utilized, but, you know, you, you do have to question the, the use of the land versus just letting it just sit there and nothing's done at all, but I am, I just want everybody to know that with general properties, general commercial properties sitting there, if those properties are sold, the gas station can go there, and there's, you don't even have to come to this council, I mean, it can be utilized from that standpoint. Am I right?
You're correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions today?
Won't see any.
All right, we'll bring that back, Mayor, November tenth, at the nine o'clock meeting. Thank y'all for being here. Next item, Mayor, is a zoning hearing for Point Twenty-Four Acres of land at eight-four-nine Brighton Road, currently general commercial, wanting to go to single-family residential three. Proposed use personal care home type one. This is recommended approval by Planning Advisory Commission and the Planning Department. Application, Madeline Brayboy is the petitioner here. Okay. Don't see any hands back there, Mr. Jones. Do you know if anyone is here with the applicant? All right. Well, in the past, Mayor, I believe, we have also delayed when the petitioner is not present, but it's a council's pleasure.
There's a motion from the mayor pro tem to delay, second from Counselor Huff. There's a motion from the mayor pro temp to delay, second from Counselor Huff. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. It's approved, it'll delay.
All right, that item will be delayed until November tenth also. Will not be re-advertized because that was proper for today. Next item, we've got mayor's a demolition ordinance for several structures that we need to go through and see if we can put the property up on the slide. Mr. Pruitt here?
Yes, he's at the podium.
All right.
Good morning, mayor and council. We have a total of nine properties that we're bringing forth for permission to demolish.
All right, I'm going to call these out one at a time, and if anybody is in the audience wanting to speak on any of these properties, please raise your hand, speak up. First one up is two oh one Thirty-second Avenue, Will Hamina Lewis, owner. Got a hand back there? Come on up, please, ma'am. And this is on a first reading ordinance for demolition to occur if council passes this at its next meeting. Go ahead and give us your name and address.
My name is Willamida Lewis, one-two-nine-nine-Nah George Highway, West Point, Georgia.
Okay, do you have a request of council this morning, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, my request is for an extension to get this house redone. And I'm looking at remodeling with time.
Ms. Lewis, how much time do you, are you asking council to give you?
I'm pretty much asking for ninety days.
Okay, have you, have you got a contractor?
I've talked with one in particular, my son has talked with two, and we're looking at the one that I, I'm really interested in doing. He has been tied with several projects, but he told me he will get to them before the virus hit. So I am in contact with him because he's doing work for me at the church and everything. So I'm just waiting on the timing that he will definitely give me to do it, but I'm saying ninety days.
Okay, and I'll tell you, historically, and this is not a policy, but historically what we have seen is if somebody comes up and wants an extension, because see, we're, the counselors hear from the residents that have to live in the neighborhood where this property is, and it really impacts the entire neighborhood. And typically what they'll do is if you want an extension, and you've got time to get this together before the second reading, they are looking for a contract, signed contract with a licensed contractor. They're looking for proof of financial ability to pay that contractor. So what I would recommend is that perhaps you talk with Mr. Pruitt and make sure you have everything that you need to bring back at the second reading. And then at that time, if you want to make that request, I think council would be in a better position to entertain it because you will have brought them some things that allows them to kind of count on it. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Pruitt, can you tell me when the first notice to the owner was about this property was issued?
Yes, ma'am. We originally started this case on this property in May of 2018. That was when the first original notice was mailed out. We held the initial demolition hearing on July second of 2018 and have seen no work or no change.
Thank you.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you, mayor. And look, I'm, I've always been sensitive to these requests, but only if somebody has a solid plan in place. There was a gentleman that, we just had a case, and we talked about this, that asked for an extension, but he did have a plan, somewhat a solid plan, and the city manager is going to make sure that that plan is being implemented. And like I told him, there's been, in this case, over two years now, and from what I've known over the years, dealing with demolitions at the last minute, I mean, that seems to be when you get people's attention, and then everybody wants to come in and do an extension. But we just, there's no way you can do that when the city has afforded all this opportunity and there's been no action. And there's a certain amount of, well, you know, the responsibility on us falls on the property owner. For whatever reason, I don't know why, there's been no action taken on it, but in order for me to be open to a request for an extension, and even at that, I wouldn't do ninety days without some kind of a solid plan in place where the city manager and the director of codes inspections can approve it and then move forward to try to give an opportunity. I just can't do that. If, like I said that day when the last gentleman came up here, we opened that door. If I open that door, then I'm going to have to try to be fair and consistent and equal with everybody, and I, you know, somebody's going to come back and say, "Why didn't you do that for me?" And I can't be put in that position. So I would hope, ma'am, that, I don't know what the consensus of council is, but I would hope within a few weeks or so that, like the mayor said, that you could get a plan, a solid plan, and I think the city manager staff can assist you in what that would be so you could help this council have confidence that there's going to be some action taking place and that we don't just wait another year or two years on this, because it wouldn't have been flagged if it wasn't a concern of many. That's usually how these demolitions go. So somebody, there's a lot of people that are concerned about this and want to see their neighborhoods, the character of their neighborhoods preserved. Thank you, mayor.
Yes, sir. And ma'am, I'll add that the recommendations we're giving you as far as getting that plan and getting some supporting documentation does not mean that council will in the end approve a, an extension. This group has been very, very committed to trying to clean up neighborhoods, and over a two-year period, it's just tough when that has sat in that kind of disrepair. But I think your best chance is to try to do, as Counselor Davis has indicated, that's get that, get your documentation together and come back in a couple of weeks when we bring it back to vote on, and there may be, there may be a way to try to work it out with the administration.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, council, if I may, I'm John Lewis, I'm Mrs. Lewis's son. I'd like to give a little brief history on the property at Thirty-second Avenue, so that way council will understand why the property unfortunately has not been finished. The property was purchased through a tax sale, and there, the intention of the property at the time was to return it to the owner who, whose parents initially owned the property and had that property for years, and it was always, "We're going to get it together, we're going to get the money and everything together." Well, Mother Nature took a strike and a storm came through, and a big pine tree snapped and caused the damage to the house. So there, unfortunately, we ended up with a bigger financial burden that the persons that we were planning to return the property to were unable to come up with the funds at the time. So we've tried to sit on it, give them opportunity to come up with money, we have talked the property a couple of times, we have cut the grass multiple times at the property, and I have personally talked to the neighbors in the area, and it's generally the neighbors across the street and two houses next door that I hear the complaints from, and I've explained to them, "Hey, yes, we are the, my mother is the legal owner of the property, but we were trying to return the property to the original owners. The father died, and the daughter had some other issues." Well, in the last, right before COVID, we had talked to two contractors, came out, looked at giving us a price on tearing the complete roof structure off, putting a new gable roof on the property, and then repairing the water damage to the one bedroom that has the most damage on the inside. Then, of course, COVID happened, and they got behind the projects, we had a lot of properties at the church that they were working on, and it kind of has put us behind in time. We do have a plan to get the property up to code, get the nice old-style vertic brick home that's been in that community for a long time to rebuild it to the things that happened to it. The insides of the property actually are not that bad, I'm not sure if anybody's going to take the wood off, but it's just the back bedroom on this back corner of this corner of the lot, and then from the water damage that's there, the top of the property was talked, like I said, as well as the inside of the property up under the rafters as well. So we've tried to do what we could do with what we thought was our limited legal rights to the property. So we do have a plan, and we will get our paperwork together and hope that council will approve an extension for us to get this good old vertile, vertic-style brick house back in the good shape for the community.
Thanks, sir. And I'm grateful to you for sharing that, that little bit of history that may or may not factor into council's decision, but, yeah, if you'd help, help your mother get those documents together and then come back during the second reading, and I feel like somebody will make a motion to allow her to be heard, and if she can demonstrate, if y'all demonstrate that you have a solid plan, as Counselor Davis had outlined, that's going to bode in your favor.
Thanks, sir, very much.
All right, thanks, sir.
All right, next property is three-two-six Twenty-Ninth Avenue. Alex Rush Senior is the owner. Anybody present this morning? Don't see any hands. Next property is twelve oh-three Neal Street, Charlene Foles, owner. Okay, the next property is fourteen twenty Twenty-Fourth Street, Capital Investment Group Holdings LLC. Don't see any hands, Mr. Pruitt. Seventeen sixteen Beaver Pond Court. This is Brian Jeffrey Life Estate, owner. Anyone here? Okay, not on that. Twenty-one twenty-two South Andrews Circle, Joe Coker, owner. Okay, next is twenty-four forty-four Pi Avenue, Crawford Smith, owner. Don't see any hands. Forty-seven oh-three Connor Road, Thomas Clifford Junior, owner. And then the last property is seven fifty-seven Lawyer's Lane, Yula Pearl Pickens Brown. Anybody present on that? All right, that's the list for today, mayor. This will be brought back in two weeks, that'll be October twenty-seventh for a second reading.
Okay, anything further, Mr. Pruitt?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next up, mayor, is the ordinance extending a state of public health emergency in Columbus through November tenth, allowing telephonic virtual meetings and authorization for the mayor to respond as needed. This is, can be adopted today on one reading since the governor has extended the state health of emergency. So we can take a motion now, mayor.
Are there any questions? Counselor Crabbe?
I was wondering, is, is a state of an emergency the only way that we can provide public meetings via telephone or video participating? Could we, could we extend it through this activity through an ordinance or a resolution? Because we may want to continue to do this once the COVID situation is over.
Well, the only way you can do the virtual meetings is to have a state of emergency in place. The state law does allow for medical excuses to be used for call-in participation, but that's all, unless they change the state law as a result of the pandemic. You've got to have a local or a state public health emergency in place, which is what we've continued to do, and maybe the General Assembly will address that in January.
Is that something maybe we might want to address with the legislative, the hometown? Can't remember what it's called. We might want to address that on a state level, just because I have a feeling that that's going to be a new normal.
I would think that GMA and ACCG would be discussing that with the General Assembly, but you can certainly talk to local legislators about it. And I don't, you know, if y'all want to add that as an item, the city manager can certainly take that into account and list it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And we could, that's a good idea, is approach GMA and ACCG about it and ask them to kind of do a little of investigation with other cities and counties as well. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, mayor. City attorney, would it require a charter change?
No, sir. That is general state law on the meetings required to be in public at a physical site unless there's a medical excuse by some member of the body. That would take a general state law change. It's not really covered in local charters.
Okay, doesn't like there's any more questions.
Well, we can get a motion on this item, mayor.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, is there a second? Second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, it passes.
All right, that passes, that will carry us through November tenth, mayor. We've got one more resolution that's commending and congratulating Assistant Police Chief Gil Sluchek on his forty-four years of service and his retirement, and his surprise celebration has already occurred, so now council can formally pass a resolution.
Yeah, and this has already been presented, so we really just need to approve it. Counselor House?
Well, mayor, I was going to volunteer to read it if you want me to, but if not, we can just pass it.
Yeah, if, I think that's a, that's a great idea, if you want to.
Thank you, mayor. Whereas Assistant Police Chief Gil Sluchek retired from the Columbus Police Department on September the thirtieth, twenty twenty, after forty-four years of service, and whereas he began his career with the Columbus Police Department as a cadet on May twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-six, and was sworn in as a police officer on May twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-seven, and whereas he served as a patrol officer in the patrol division and was promoted to detective in nineteen eighty-seven, and worked in the Crimes Against Persons Unit where he investigated robberies, assault, and homicides, and whereas he was promoted to sergeant in nineteen eighty-seven and assigned to the patrol division, and was later reassigned to the Bureau of Investigative Services where he again investigated crimes against persons, and whereas he remained in investigative services after being promoted to lieutenant, and upon being promoted to captain, was assigned as the Special Operations Unit Commander, and whereas he was then appointed to major and commanded the Bureau of Investigative Services until his appointment to Assistant Chief, and whereas during his forty-four years and four months with the police department, he was a member of the department's pistol team and served over twenty years on the SWAT team, and whereas other notable accomplishments include Officer of the Year in nineteen eighty-eight, Associate's Degree from Chattahoochee Valley Community College, Master's Degree from Troy State University, Master's Degree from Columbus State University, graduate of the Law Enforcement Command College Class Four, graduate of the FBI National Academy, two-hundred-and-fourtieth session, graduate of Leadership Columbus, and post-certified law enforcement instructor, and whereas this council desires to express special appreciation to Assistant Chief Gil Sluchek for his years of dedicated service to the Columbus community. Now therefore, the Council of Columbus, Georgia hereby resolves, we hereby commend and congratulate Assistant- and congratulate Assistant Police Chief Gil Sluchek upon his retirement and express our deep appreciation for his 44 years of service to the citizens of Columbus, Georgia. His service to Columbus will long be remembered.
Is, is that a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilor House, second by Mayor Protem. Uh, any discussion? All in, is this to the, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. That is approved. Well earned, well deserved. He's a great, great public servant here at, at the city of Columbus. Councilor Barnes?
Yes, um, in the interest of the safety of our citizens, Mr. Mayor and council, um, the Veterans Day Parade will not be held. However, you know, the Veterans Day Parade has just been supported by so many people and it's been a huge success year after year, but only due to the efforts of a number of individuals. And I've submitted a, um, resolution to the, um, city attorney. The, the marvelous patriotic people, citizens of Columbus, Phoenix City and Fort Benning have just shown so much love to veterans from the first Veterans Day Parade until last year. And so, um, I'd like to sponsor a resolution for the citizens of Columbus, Phoenix City and Fort Benning for their immense support of the area's veterans. But also for the many military organizations that have consistently supported the Veterans Day Parade, the JROTC cadets and school bands, and all the military organizations and the support personnel. Columbus Parks and Recs, Phoenix City Parks and Recs. And so, I would submit, uh, I turned it into the, uh, city attorney already, to Amy. The veterans in this area here have just been so marvelous, the many organizations. And there's a huge list of them, Mr. Mayor, so I know it's gonna be, uh, you'll probably just have to read the, the resolution and just have them stand, but the citizens in this area have just been so warm, the, the, the signs, the children out during the parade, telling the veterans, "We love you, thank you for your service." And it brings to mind the first Veterans Day Parade that I did. Afterwards, I was walking away and there was a lady, she was having difficulty walking and she was going over the railroad tracks. And I, I went up to her and I grabbed her by her arm and I was leading her across and she said, you know, she says, "My husband is not here anymore, he's passed. But he would have really deeply appreciated this and our children and our grandchildren deeply appreciate." So the, the citizens of this area are just aw- awesome when it comes to the, the patriotism and the support of veterans. And so, I submitted that, uh, resolution, um, to bring to council.
Well done, absolutely. Uh, it's Councilor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to add, Councilor Barnes, that's a marvelous idea and I don't think we can ever thank you enough for what you did to make that parade happen. So thank you for that effort.
How many years is this? 11th parade. Would've been the 11th parade. Yeah, this started as just a dream from Councilor Barnes. Uh, he was, I think, I don't wanna speak for him, but I think he was a little disappointed that we didn't already recognize veterans on Veterans Day. And I just, I appreciate what you've done because it, you know, us, us to be so dependent upon military veterans, uh, in our community, uh, we should be recognizing them and I, and we do. And the parade gets bigger every year. I, I'm gonna really miss it. My, my favorite veteran is my 88-year-old dad who flew helicopters in the Army. And, um, he actually rode in the parade with me the last, the last two years. And, um, it's just a great tribute to the, to the veterans of this area and I-
And, and, and I would like for you to take, I know your dad won't do it, that's, this is your father, and we talked on the side of the truck. Uh, and you can see the pride on his face that he was riding in the Veterans Day Parade with his son, but you know who the star was, Mr. Mayor? You're the mayor of the city. The star was your dad.
Uh, listen, I, he, he, I'm named for him and I've been chasing him, you know, ever since.
(laughing)
I am, I am, uh, I am, uh, I'm Skip, he's Mr. Henderson, sir. He's, uh, but I appreciate that. All right? Uh, we'll make sure that that gets done from the city attorney's office and we'll have that re- resolution ready to go.
Something will be brought back on November 10th for that resolution. Mayor, we did have a couple of councils request an executive session on real estate acquisition and disposal. That's all we have listed.
Okay. All right. We've got, uh, next public, uh, agenda. I'm trying to, this, Mr. Farnsworth Coleman, representing Pat's Place regarding the noise complaints from train traveling near his bed and breakfast. Uh, and welcome, sir. We'll ask you to, to state your name, give your address, and you'll have five minutes to address council and I'll give you a signal when you've got one minute left.
I'd just like to say, uh, good morning to, especially to the council and for the opportunity to present, uh, I guess our complaint. My name is Farnsworth Coleman Senior. Pat's Place is at 909 Third Avenue Downtown Columbus. Uh, my wife has, uh, a couple of, uh, vacation rentals. She has one in Pine Mountain, but, uh, look like her most busiest one is in downtown Columbus. Uh, we've had, uh, guests from all over, you know, we've had them from Europe, from France, from all over the U.S. But we had a couple of them that, uh, complained about the train that's traveling, I guess, down Broad and the time that it comes and the noise is, is just unbearable. I don't know if anybody has ever taken a decibel readings of that train. And so I stood there one day and, and I just kinda observed the train going down Broad Street. The train is traveling probably at five miles an hour and I can't understand why the horn has to blow continuously when it's going down Broad Street. Also, the train is not crossing an intersection where there may be traffic coming toward that intersection because this train stops at the light and everything. So I can't understand why, you know, it's such a, a loud, uh, noise or warning or whatever. I don't have a, I don't have a video presentation, but I do have audio. And this is kind of what it sounds like standing right in front of a, a Pat's Place downtown. Now, can you imagine being at the, at the Riverwalk? Maybe being at the, uh, at one of the great events downtown? And now you're trying to get some sleep. This train travels down Broad at eight, midnight and like two o'clock in the morning. And it's, it's, uh, it's excruciating. We had one gentleman, I think he was from Chicago, and he called my wife that morning. He said, you know, "We, we came here for, you know, to enjoy some of the events downtown Columbus." And can you just imagine? You spend all day at the Riverwalk, uh, uh, the Whitewater Rapids. You get in the bed at midnight and here this train comes. Not only that, this is a residential area. I mean, you got residents down there. And I, for the life of me, I, I can't understand what he's continuously on the horn for. I mean, especially when he comes through there at two o'clock in the morning, no traffic. I stood there when he passed, when he was going, I guess he was going, uh, east on Broad. He crossed veterans and he ran, he went out of sight, but I can still hear him at 909 Third Avenue. What I'm asking is, you know, most, cause, you know, I worked in the manufacturing industry. Most companies have their own switching car where they switch their rails in and out and then the main train comes in when they get the switching done, then they take them out. But evidently they are using this one to switch cars in and out at a manufacturing facility. And I, for the life of me, I don't know why they have to do it four times a day and especially all through the night. So what I was asking is someone to maybe look at the frequency of the train and also look at the volume of the noise or the, the horn that definitely can be reduced. I mean, I don't know why you need to hear the train if you're a mile and a half away. I could see it if you within a couple of blocks, but why do you need to hear it a mile and a half away? That's what I wanted to present to the council.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I, I will tell you that I have, I've heard that train. I've, um, I've been at events at the Ironworks Trade Convention Center and somebody is about to give a talk and they have to actually wait the train out. Um, I can also tell you that we have precious little control over the, uh, over the railroad. But I do think the question is worth asking is if it's necessary to blow the horn at the 2:00 AM run-through there. I know there's some safety requirements, but there may be another way that we can go with something not quite as loud. Will, Mr. City Attorney, any additional thoughts?
One thing that would help was if they had just flashing lights on it. You know how the school bus just flash? There's no flashing light, but there's plenty horn.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mayor, you're right, it's state law that controls their safety rules and, you know, they, the, um, office could certainly be contacted whichever railroad it is, but that's, uh, that's not a local jurisdiction area.
Well, we'll, we will check into it, we'll place the call, uh, and, uh, see if we can get some kind of response from the railroad and, um, we'll see where it goes.
And then, uh, I'm willing to, someone who's in the decision, make an area of the railroad.
Yes, sir.
I'm willing to give them a weekend free stay at Pat's Place where they can get that noise.
We appreciate, sir, and I appreciate you coming here. Mr. Davis?
Yeah, Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Thanks for coming, Dave. You've got a very, very, very valid concern, but I'm gonna give you a little more information, uh, cause I, I am aware of that. Uh, I think there's been years of effort, whether from the chamber or other members, uh, to try to, uh, to do away with that route. It hasn't been successful. I think Norfolk Southern owns that, if I'm not mistaken, and they, uh, you know, they're just not (laugh), look, I ain't gonna say they're not bad people or good people, but, uh, you know, we just hadn't had a lot of success on a lot of things with, with Norfolk Southern. But keep in mind, I mean, you're talking about, you, it looks like you have a, a business, uh, in the area, but keep in mind, you've got a major hotel right there, right in front of this train track you're talking about with the same situation. They've been dealing with it for years. I mean, years. And they've had the same complaint, a lot of people have had the same complaint. And, you know, it's just, you know, outside an act of God, it, it just hasn't happened. So I wanted to give you that information cause I don't want you to get your hopes up, but you've got a valid concern and, uh, you know, I, I, I can't give you an easy answer on it, but right now there's been no effort to, uh, to change the course of that train and service of that train. Okay.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to city manager's agenda. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, let me just say to Mr. Coleman, uh, what I'll do is, um, I'll have staff to pull, uh, his video presentation here today. And, um, we will send it to, um, Mr. Connor Poe, who's the governmental affairs representative for Norfolk Southern. And, um, he's pretty quick to respond and I don't know that he will be able to do anything, but if we're able to get something done, uh, he would be the person who would, uh, assist us in getting there. So we will pull his video so that Mr. Poe will get to hear directly from him, um, the business owner and concerned citizen regarding, uh, the noise and the other issues he expressed. So we will send that to him.
Thank you.
With that, uh, Mayor and Council, um, I've got a rather lengthy agenda here. And the first thing on my agenda is the 2020 Legislative Agenda Items. And you've, uh, we've included eight on this list, um, for consideration by our legislative delegation in the, uh, 2021 Legislative Session, 2021 Legislative Session, which starts in January. Our Hometown Connection is scheduled for, uh, October 29th. And, uh, typically we bring these to you in advance that you can vote on, uh, items on the agenda that we will officially, uh, present to the legislative delegation at what we refer to as our Hometown Connection. And again, that's on October 29th. And so right now we have eight items. Uh, we can continue to add to this list of items. The legislative session starts, uh, second Monday in January. And even after they start, if we've got some issues that we need to, uh, ask them to further consider, uh, we can still get them up to them at that time. And, um, and then during the legislative session, if there's something that's urgent for us, we can ask them to consider those things as well. So I'm gonna run through this list and we'll ask you to vote on each item. Uh, the first, uh, item, and many of these have been on previous legislative agendas. Uh, but first, we've got nonpartisan primary ballots for all locally elected officials, including constitutional officers. Uh, this comes from Councilor John House. It's a carryover. Uh, so we would be requesting, uh, our delegation to amend state law to provide that all locally elected officials, including constitutional officers, be elected on nonpartisan primary ballots. And, uh, we are asking, uh, you to approve this today.
So motion from Mayor Protem. Is there a second from Councilor Crabbe? Uh, any discussion? Councilor Davis?
And, Mr. City Manager, I'm, you know, I'm gonna approve that as well, but, uh, I do have, I think you and I talked about this earlier. I've been out of town for a, a while and I haven't been able to, uh, to address this, but I do need to get with city attorney. I do have some things that, uh, would be carryovers from last year, uh, that I'd like to see back on there. And then I have some new requests as well. I just need to take some time to get with the city attorney and make sure it's, uh, it's written up okay, uh, if you're okay with that, uh, and try to get them on that agenda before the meeting on the 29th so you can, uh, you can present them.
Yeah, we'll be happy to add any, uh, items that come forward from, um, any of the members of council, the mayor. But again, we will have Hometown Connection on the 29th. We do have another meeting on the 27th, I believe. And we typically like to approve those, um, have the majority vote of council, um, before we present them to, uh, the legislative, uh, delegation during Hometown Connection. So if you would get those to the city attorney, we can get them added and get council members to vote on them at the next meeting.
Just get them, get them into the city attorney. Uh, we're having trouble hearing up here when you're talking. So get them to the city attorney and then they'll get them to the council prior to the 27th meeting so they can vote on them. Uh, cause council need a few days to be able to review them and try to understand what you're asking. And then, uh, we get them voted on on the 27th and then that way they can be presented to the delegation on the 29th.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
Okay. Thank you. So we had a motion, a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed, no? It passes.
And the second item on the agenda is county special, uh, local option sales tax maintenance reserve. Um, and, um, the mayor has led the way in this and council members have joined in requesting that the delegation consider amendments to the county special purpose local option sales tax, uh, to allow consolidated governments to expend up to 5% of the tax levied, uh, to be spent for future maintenance of the capital outlay projects approved by the referendum levying the tax. And, uh, this comes back, uh, before us by- And this comes back before us by Councilmember John House and we're asking your approval on this item.
Motion by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is a second from Counselor Crabbe. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. It passes.
The third item is Military Retiree State Tax Exemption. We're requesting the delegation support efforts to exempt military retiree pay from state income tax in order to attract military retirees to Columbus as recommended by the Chamber of Commerce. It's a carryover. It comes to us by Councilor John House.
I think there was a motion by Counselor Crabbe and I heard Mayor Counselor Thomas. And again, I apologize. If I don't pick it up, it's because I can't hear you. Any discussion to that order? Ma'am? It's a big room. I hope I'm looking. Yeah, that would help. Motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed, say no. All right, that is approved.
Item four, Interstate 14, comes to us by Councilor John House. Advocating support to include specific funding in the state budget for this DOT project for an extension of I-14 to and through Columbus.
All right, I heard them. Second from, motion from Counselor Huff, second from Counselor Garrett. So we'll ask for any input, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, no. Pass.
And then we have another one coming back from Counselor Judy Thomas. And it is requesting the local delegation support House Bill 347 or similar legislation to amend Georgia law so as to shorten the original performance period from the current 12 months to 18 weeks, reduce the spending threshold from $500,000 to $100,000 in the aggregate during a taxable year, and further clarify parameters that define Tier 1 and Tier 2 counties so as to provide additional allowance for the applicable incentive. Asking your approval.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Counselor Thomas. Counselor Crabbe, to the motion?
Thank you. Can you just go over that a little bit more? I don't really understand what all of that meant.
Counselor Thomas will respond to that.
Counselor Crabbe, as you may know, the state of Georgia gives these kinds of incentives to the film industry. And they do not give the same consideration to live performances. And for example, the River Center has, for the last several years, had a company that wanted to come into Columbus, use the River Center, and be here like, I think it's eight weeks, to get their show ready to tour the country. Well, they are not eligible for any of these incentives, as the City Manager said, because, for example, the film industry, you have to have a year-long program. Well, the live companies are not in Georgia for a year. They're here much a shorter time than that. The last time we had somebody at River Center, they were here for 10 weeks. They had a company of over 100 people that stayed in our hotels, that ate our food, that shopped at our shops, but with none of this incentive. And so that's what we're asking for, is that some of the same kinds of incentive be given to live performance companies that are given to the film industry. Not as much, because they're not here as long, but the same general type. And that would be not only for Columbus, but there are a number of other venues throughout the state that also would be eligible to have these companies come in and stay and make their preparations.
All right, it's a motion, a second. Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed, say no. It's approved.
Item six, Reciprocal Sovereign Immunity. This is from Counselor John House, requesting that the delegation encourage all possible legislative actions which would encourage negotiations with Alabama and other neighboring states to provide that the laws of each state would be amended to provide for reciprocal sovereign immunity, carrying out duties. And this is when carrying out duties and operating vehicles in neighboring states would have the same or similar sovereign immunity protection that they have on a Georgia law.
Counselor House?
Well?
Thank you, Mayor. This goes back to the discussions we had some time ago about take-home car policy and what caused us to stop at the Alabama line because of the concerns about sovereign immunity. And so it's just an attempt to try to force that resolution of that issue in a favorable way so that if we want to extend it, we can, and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any, do we have a motion and a second? Motion from Counselor Crabbe, second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, say no. That's approved.
And number seven comes from Mayor Pro Tem, Gary Allen. Sales Tax Accountability and Transparency, User Safeguard. We've termed it in the past as Point of Sales Data, but this is requesting the delegation introduce legislation, amend in Georgia law to allow Georgia cities access to tax information as needed when local governing authorities, finance, or tax officials have need of said tax information in the discharge of their official duties. And we're asking your approval.
Motion by the Mayor Pro Tem. Second by Counselor Crabbe. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, no. Passes.
Number eight comes to us from Counselor Jerry Pops Barnes. It's a carryover from previous years. And you may know, because you've heard from Counsel Barnes, that he wants to amend or remove requirements for the hiring of hospice administrators in compliance with state of Georgia hospice rules. The requirement to be a healthcare professional or health service administrator is very limiting in the choice that hospices have when hiring administrators. Many qualified candidates have backgrounds that would suit them to successfully lead a hospice, some in other areas of healthcare and some in completely different fields. And so again, this is to support legislation to amend or remove requirements for the hiring of hospice administrators in compliance with state of Georgia hospice rules. We're asking your approval.
Motion by Counselor House, second from, did I hear? Mayor Pro Tem? All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. It passes.
So that is the legislative agenda and we'll look to receive the additional items that Counselor Davis is interested in bringing forward. And we will also, any coming from any other council member, department heads, or elect officials, that's good for Columbus, Georgia. We want to add those to the agenda. The second item on my agenda, Mayor, is a Camp David RV Resort Lease-Are Agreement and Georgia Power Easement. I am going to...
I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas.
Mr. City Manager, I'm sorry, before you leave the legislative agenda, Counselor Crabbe, were you going to make a recommendation for, the addition to the legislative agenda that we were just talking about a minute ago?
Counselor Crabbe?
Yes, can I make that motion to add the telephonic and video meetings?
Well, no need for a motion, but what I would say, if you send it to me or the City Attorney, they'll put the, they'll do the verbiage language, write it up, and then when we'll come back on the 27th, along with those from Counselor Davis, we'll have that on.
Okay, sounds great. Thanks.
Yes. Mr. City Attorney?
We just forwarded the resolution on that topic that was drafted before, on the virtual meetings, to you and the City Manager, so it's ready to be placed on the list.
Okay. Well, we'll have it on the 27th.
All right. And Counselor Davis?
Thanks, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, I know you're fixing to talk about this lease agreement, number two. Would you be so kind to pull that for a meeting until I have a chance to talk with you a little bit more on that? I would like to discuss it and probably, it's probably, you know, discussing it here at the table wouldn't, I think it'd be better if you and I had a chance to talk about it.
Well, if, I mean...
Well, Mayor, I've got a Westfield update on my agenda and I'm going to go ahead and call that update up at this time under the presentations because it's affiliated or associated with number two on my agenda.
All right. We've got one more counsel before we get to that. Counselor Crabbe, did you have anything? Oh, okay.
And so, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to call up the Westfield, Historic Westfield update. We've got Tara Martinez, Chief of Operations of Historic Westfield, and Julian Singer, Executive Director of Historic Westfield. I'm going to go ahead and do that update, Counselor Davis, and then at least talk about what the RV matter on my agenda is about. And then if you want to delay us to bring it back, that's fine, but they are here and we're going to go ahead and hear from them at this time.
There we go.
Okay, great. Hi, my name's Julian Singer. I'm the Executive Director at Historic Westfield and just wanted to thank you all for allowing us to provide this update. It's not long, but we definitely wanted to give you guys a current status update.
Ms. Singer?
And so, Westfield opened and reopened at our current Columbus site in...
And Ms. Singer, I'm going to ask you to talk a little bit louder so we can make sure that they can hear you up there.
Absolutely. I can definitely do that. And maybe I can raise this a little bit as well. So the grand opening for Historic Westfield was on June 22nd, 2019, and we've currently moved 17 buildings onto our Columbus site to complete our Phase 1 movement, move from Lumpkin, Georgia. Since opening, we've had over 12,000 visitors come through the site and that includes over 2,000 students from area schools. We did close in the spring of 2020 due to COVID-19. We recently reopened on Thursday, October 8th, so just last week, we reopened for the first time since the spring. We do have reduced hours at present moment, but are happy to have visitors and guests coming back to Historic Westfield. And we've had a successful first week with people very interested in coming back to site. The fundraising has begun for Phase 2. We have additional buildings located in Lumpkin. There are about 14 buildings still there that need to come back up to the Columbus site. We've started fundraising for that move and we anticipate moving those buildings back to Columbus within the next, starting to move them back in the next one to two years. There, for the Phase 1 move, trees were removed from South Lumpkin Road and we've agreed with the city to replace those trees. We have not replaced them yet because of the additional buildings that need to come back onto site. So replacing them now would just require us to take them back out and then replace them again. So we're looking to replace those after Phase 2 move takes place. Just to kind of update on our goals that we're moving forward with, we are, part of our mission statement is to educate and empower youth through our programming. With COVID and closure, we've been working on our types of programming that we can take into the classrooms virtually. So we've been working hard on coming up with alternative ways to reach out to the public through virtual field trips and virtual tours. And we've also been trying to collaborate and form partnerships with local historic societies and other organizations, working with the National Infantry Museum, Oxbow Meadows, to try to form and enhance the community of organizations that do similar work in the Columbus area. And we're continuing to work to become financially sustainable and really trying to build our programs and buildings and exhibits for the future generations. Well, that's our update for the status of Historic Westfield.
Okay. And so Historic Westfield is an awesome venue that has relocated to Columbus and we're excited that it's a part of our community. Let me just mention this Camp David RV Resort Lease-Are Agreement and Georgia Power Easement. And Counselor Davis will be happy to delay it, but what we were asking for today is the Lease-Are Agreement, Georgia Power Easement, and any other documents pertaining to the Historic Westfield, Inc., sub-Lose-Are, Camp David RV Resort. The memorandum of agreement between the city and Historic Westfield would remain the same, would have no change, but Camp David RV Resort would bring in increased tourism, property taxes, and lease payments for that Track B that's out there. And the use of this property would relieve, the use of the property would relieve the city of the responsibility to maintain the property and return a portion to the tax roll. Because it's not used at Track B, we are still having to maintain that property and having to maintain it and it's not on the tax roll. And so we see this as an opportunity. And so the use, and so Historic Westfield, Inc., would begin payment of an annual rental of $1,200 per year for each lease year as a part of this deal. An annual rent would be received every three years thereafter with Historic Westfield, Inc. And so that is what this agreement would be about. And I know that Camp David has a brief presentation and I want you to hear that and get a feel for the Historic Westfield and subleasing to the Camp David and what they would be doing and how it impacts the city in terms of lessening our responsibility for maintenance and putting back on the tax roll and sort of how it all comes together. And so with that, if we've got the Camp David RV update, we'll hear that at this time. Let's just get that mic on.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Adam Hunt. I'm the owner of Camp David RV Resort. So just wanted to introduce myself and kind of give you my briefing that I've prepared. So I'm currently an active-duty soldier on Fort Benning and this is a small business that I'm creating. So we have the PowerPoint ready to go. Okay, the agenda that I'm going to cover is the overview, the timeline, my bi-phase development, and the request for assistance, basically the two items, any questions. So I'm located to the south of Historic Westfield, directly across from the National Infantry Museum. So it's real close to the NIM entrance and as well I have access to the Riverwalk. So I'll be open to the public for visitors to Historic Westfield, families of the Columbus area, the Chattahoochee Valley area. families of the Columbus area, the Chattahoochee Valley area, all the soldiers to Fort Benning, everyone from the National Infantry Museum, and as well, just runners and joggers who travel frequently on the Riverwalk. Okay, this is my planning timeline. I'm breaking it down into three phases. I have completed Phase One, so I initially signed a lease agreement with Historic Westfield last October 2019 and began submitting the plans to the city in February 2020. And currently, I have a certificate of occupancy and have opened Phase One. I have 14 sites available as well as tent camping. So, my Phase Two and Phase Three, after receiving an SBA 7 Alpha loan, I will like facilitate the growth in Phase Two and Phase Three. Okay, this is the overview, basically what I'm looking at, how the park will be laid out. What we have in red is Phase One, and it is currently complete. So, and I have open for business and have currently occupation. Phase Two and Phase Two is in blue will be an additional 14 sites, and then Phase Three will be an additional 10 sites. So, I'm total looking at around 45 to 50 RV sites that I'll have available as well as 50 tent camping sites for primitive camping. And I currently do not have a bathhouse or an office, so those will come in as Phase Two comes around. Okay, and my request for assistance, so I had to bring power, there was existing power on the property. I had to bring more power in. And Georgia Power needs permission, basically, to maintain the power lines. This is very standard, but with Historic Westfield not owning that, the city actually owns the land. So, the city has the approval authority for that. And the leasers agreement, so I am applying for an, through the Small Business Administration, a 7 Alpha loan, and they need acknowledgement of the landowner, which is the city of Columbus, to move forward with the SBA loan. So, that's basically what the leasers agreement is requesting for, and I need that sign to move forward into Phase Two and Three of construction.
So, is there, is this time sensitive that you need to move your loan application, small business loan, through?
Currently, it is not. I've built Phase One already, so, and that has already been financed, so, no. And then the last item that I had is, there's the existing Riverwalk, which goes on to the property, that goes on to Lake Rin. So, Lake Rin is to the south of the property. It's a 25-acre lake. There's a bridge and then a dock that's open to the public, and the dock and the bridge is in disrepair. So, it's actually a, very much of a hazard to the public that go on to that. So, my recommendation currently would be to close that part of the Riverwalk off or immediately fix the wood on the bridge and on the dock as well. So, this will, okay, this is the addendum. It just outlines where the power is. It's on the property, and everyone should have a copy of that as an attachment. So, the power lines actually extend around Lake Rin to the south. And this is the pictures of the dock that I mentioned that's in disrepair, that is needing fixing. So, these were existing structures that the city has had in place for over the last 15 years. So, with a new development of my property on that, there will be a maintained freedom of maneuver for this, I guess, anyone walking on the Riverwalk. So, instead of me fixing the bridge, I'm requesting that the city maintain what they have currently. Does anybody have any questions, or this kind of concludes my presentation?
Any questions?
Okay.
Doesn't appear to be any. Well, first of all, thank you for your service. And secondly, we're, yeah, it's a pretty interesting enterprise. We're excited, hope it's successful, and hope it puts more people closer to the National Infantry Museum and Westfield.
So, do we have another RV park in Columbus?
There are two RV parks in Columbus. And then you have Uchi Creek on Fort Benning as well, which is open to military and retirees. So, I was a company commander at airborne school, so I know all the graduations they have. There's a huge demand and need for people to, that camp, to use these places. I grew up camping very much, and my parents did. And this is a shortfall that Columbus does not have, does not have a premier campground on the Columbus side of town, like that isn't a good location. So, yeah, there's definitely a big need for their, for a campground.
And it's a good fit for Historic Westfield?
Absolutely, yes. This will help alleviate some of the financial burden for Westfield making the move to Columbus. So, it'll be mutually beneficial for myself to be able to lease the land from them and then the capital that'll bring in from subleasing it from Westfield from the city.
Sure. So, Ms. Mayor, if there are no questions, and if Counselor Davis still wants to delay, I'll be happy to delay and bring back.
All right, is there a motion to delay? All right, Counselor Davis wants to delay it till the, for, till the next meeting on the 22nd? I can't hear you. Two weeks. Okay, motion, is there a second? Second, Counselor Crabbe, any discussion on the delay? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, it'll be delayed, it'll be brought back in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on my agenda, Mr. Mayor, is the Public Art MOU advocacy through art. And this organization, and I'll ask them to come forward to the mic. They, they've been working on something, and, and so, and it's been, been delayed, it's been delayed a few times. But I'm asking for approval for a memorandum of understanding between the city and Columbus State University for an advocacy through arts project. And as we know, CSU, Columbus State University, is a part of the university system of Georgia, and they enroll more than 8,500 students in a wide variety of degree programs. And, and so, if we, if counsel agreed to this memorandum of understanding, the city's responsibility would be to allow Columbus State University to utilize the wall located at 18th Street and 5th Avenue for a public arts initiative to support racial justice. The city will approve the art concept prior to the start of the project. And so, I will say again that the city would approve the art concept prior to the start of the project. Columbus State University will be financially responsible for all aspects of this project. They will be required to provide a traffic plan of the sidewalk area and use of right-of-way and any applicable permits. They will also be responsible for all maintenance of the wall during the period this contract is in effect. They will be required to coordinate with adjoining property owners, businesses in the immediate area. They would obtain waivers from any participants working on the wall, releasing the city and Columbus State University from any and all claims during the term of the agreement. For the city, there's no financial obligation. And, but we thought we would want a memorandum of understanding with them so that we control the content and what goes on this wall. Now, we know that there are a few other walls around Columbus. If you travel down Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and you get to just where the appliance shop is, there's a very long wall where there's public art. And there are some others throughout the community. Now, in the past, we've never had them, they've not come before the city. There's just not been any rules, but we thought we would put some things in place with this as we did with the Martin Luther King Jr. Outdoor Learning Trail. We brought the design of the signage before this council, and we brought the verbiage that went on each of the signs on the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Outdoor Learning Trail before this council less than 30 days ago that you approved. And this would be handled in the same way as the Outdoor Learning Trail, and, and it's a way forward for us when it comes to those things where people are going to do things on city right-of-way. And so, I'm here asking for your approval, and I'm going to yield to the podium to this group. I really don't know who you are, where you come from, but I know it's Columbus State University. And so, we're going to turn your mic on. If you will hit that, press that button, the mayor will turn your mic on, and then we will hear from you. Just a sec, there we go.
Okay. Thank you, city manager.
Would you introduce yourself, your team, and then have some...
My name is Hannah Israel. I'm here from Columbus State University. I'm here with the Chair of the Department of Art, Chris Whitty, to my left, Becca Sajak from the Dragonfly Trail Network, Sharika Day from Kidspreneur, and a student from CSU University, Kayla Shepherd. We are here to get your approval for the MOU for the public art initiative, and we are also here to answer any questions that you have about the MOU. I know that we have presented our intention months ago, I think in sometime in August, and we have been waiting for the approval for the city to go forward. One of the things that we are also looking for, this MOU will be a huge part of a grant that we're writing for the Knight Foundation, and we can't go forward without, without, without the approval of the city and the MOU. So, this is really important for us to go forward. The other thing that the city manager had indicated is the process of selection for the artwork for this public art mural has to go through a series before it even comes to you. In the process, in the Department of Art, we will do a call for artwork with the theme of hope, healing, and community. This is a really important subject matter that will be contingent on the approval of the mural. That, that selection process will go through the Department of Art Selection Committee. It will need to be presented, the winner of that selection will need to be presented to the Chair of the Department of Art for approval, and then it has to go through the College of Arts Dean for approval, and then the provost and the president. And then we will present that, that public art mural to all of you as well as the Piedmont Regional Hospital and the Ronald McDonald House. I know this is a huge initiative, and I think it's important that all of us has a say on it. It is about the voice of the community. And I'd like to open this platform for also my colleagues to say a few words.
I think, I just want to thank you for allowing us to be here. I just want to reiterate what Hannah has said, that we have every intention of working with the stakeholders around the actual piece of property, the city, CSU, and actually, we're going to reach out into the community of the neighborhoods that live around there and make sure we get their input on what this mural looks like. So, we have every intention to hold up our end of things, and we are really excited about this mural, and we hope that we can get your support today. I'm Becca Sajak. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Sharika Day. And again, just reiterating what Becca and Hannah have talked about, the importance of this project to us, what it means to the community, and also just helping us again to be in line with the initiatives that are set out at the chamber with Columbus 2025, Connected and Vibrant Communities. A lot of other cities like St. Louis and Charleston are doing arts projects where they're involving their community. It's allowing people to come out, visit, connect, and it kind of eliminates all of the racial and different boundaries that are just set before us. So, we see this as an opportunity to expand, like the city manager was talking about with the different murals that are already in Columbus, being able to add to that and help to connect our city and also just attract people here. So, that, that's part of our goal.
Hello, my name is Kayla Shepherd, and as a student here, I think that this process is very important for my peers to see that we have support from positions of leadership and from the community. I think this mural is important, and I think having this process gone about and seeing it and getting these approvals and getting these voices and opinions from other people from positions of power will really help empower my peers to see that our voices aren't lost within the legislation system. Thank you.
So, my name's Chris Whitty, and I'm the Chair of the department, relatively new here. Started about a year ago. And I've been doing this work for a really, really long, longer than I care to admit, frankly. And worked at four different colleges, and the, the love for the art department and CSU and this community is kind of mind-boggling to me. You don't, you just don't see facilities like those that we can boast of at our college. So, I kind of feel like this is the beginning of the school and the art department paying, paying back, you know, working with the community and doing some things for the community that can be really beneficial. And these practices, this type of art is really about building conversations, like Hannah said, hope and healing and community, and that's really what it's about. And that's what, that's what we're about in the department. Thank you.
We would like to open the, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Hannah. We have Counselor, Counselor Tucker?
First of all, I want to say thank you for this initiative in support of social and racial justice. Secondly, I have a question. We have received multiple emails asking to basically disapprove this request. And my main question is, what is your relationship with the organization Black Lives Matter?
We do not. That was not any part of our language. In the beginning, when we did, when we did bring this up, there was a huge influence of the murals that's being put all around the nation that indicated the words "Black Lives Matter." We are not part of any affiliation with that organization.
Thank you for clearing it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you're aware, but we're having a hard time hearing up here. So, if you could just bear with us as we go through this. The, I appreciate Counselor Tucker asking the question. When, when you first appeared before us, that was what has spun around in the community. So, it has caused us to receive a lot of emails and communications. So, the MOU has been reworded to reflect what you said, unity and beautification. uh, unity and beautification and that type approach. What I wanted to try to offer and clarify, uh, is, um, to, to amend the MOU to reflect some of the changes or some of the accountability side of this. Since the MOU has been reworded, I think some of the areas have changed. But, uh, basically, it says, "CSU is responsible for maintenance of the wall." And what, what I was wanting to approach in that vein is, uh, instead of painting the wall, would there be a way that we could attach the art to the wall? Whether it's hanging it on there or attaching it. And then you're not, it's not permanent except for the attaching, attachment portion. Uh, you can interchange the art out a, a little easier, I think, that once we get the, the, uh, once we decide how we're going to attach it to the wall. The other concern that was mentioned was how long will the wall, will the art stay on the wall? And so, we wanna talk through that. I know this is a first, this is a one-year contract, a one-year MOU agreement with options to renew. But, uh, as we enter into this agreement, somebody used the description of we're, we're dipping our toe in the water. So we wanna walk into this gradually and try to, try to get comfortable with the direction we're going in. So, regarding the maintenance, um, it, it's not specific in here as to the responsibilities for all maintenance during this period. And, uh, some things that came to mind were weather-related situations, damage to the art, um, auto accidents, or vandalism. So, what I wanted to do was offer some amendments for discussion that would require that these, these be changed out or, uh, maintained within a period of time. Uh, I was thinking five days. I wasn't sure what, what was comfortable for you. But, uh, within five days, have something changed out, uh, on that and, and addressed as far as the maintenance goes, if any of those things I mentioned occur. The other item was, I think it's in item B, CSU would be required to provide a traffic plan. But it wasn't specific who that traffic plan goes to. So what I wanted to do was offer an amendment that would require that plan to be submitted to the, uh, City Manager, to the traffic engineers, so that they could, they could, uh, help you with that and set that out. And, the other item, I believe it is E, which talks about CSU is responsible for obtaining the waivers. Uh, any, any necessary waivers should, uh, I was wanting copies of those to go to the City Manager's office, so that we would have those in our files. This was reworded, and it was just handed to us. So, a lot of us haven't had a chance to go through it yet to see where all the changes are. Mayor, that's all I have right now. But I would like for Council to consider some of the items that I've, uh, brought forth.
Okay. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question and a comment. When it's all over with, whether it's one year, five years, whatever it is, who cleans it up? Who gets whatever's on the wall off the wall? Is that CSU, is that part of the maintenance?
I believe that was the agreement.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we might need to state that, so there's no discussion about that. Um, and Mayor, I mean, I've talked to you before. I don't like painting walls. I don't, I don't like a private group painting a wall, because I think we're gonna have a lot of groups that may wind up asking us permission to paint a wall. If we're gonna go down this road, we need a policy, so we can, if someone else should ask, we can tell them what they're gonna have to do. But I just don't like painting city structures, because I feel like we start down the road if anybody could come ask, and then we, the Council, wind up adjudicating who's okay, um, and who, who puts up whatever is all right. And, I, I don't like judging whether art's okay or not. Uh, 'cause I, I think our, our function is to worry about the safety of our citizens, taking care of our employees, not judging art.
Well, and, and I, I don't think you, I don't think you're wrong. I think that, uh, what this, the essential question is here, in my mind. I mean, there's all kinds of safeguards. Council, there's an MOU that we have, this Council has oversight on how it's structured. Obviously, the, the, um, the content is, has to be approved by a number of people at the, at the university's level, but then also by this Council. So this Council has the ultimate, um, say over it. I think the ultimate question here is, how do we deal with public art? Uh, I, I, we've seen it in a number of different communities, and we've seen it really generate a sense of community. And I, I don't know how it works. I don't know if they do one mural and it just stays there for years and years and years. 'Cause I would envision if, after four years, if CSU decided not to redo it, that that mural would stay there instead of painting over it, if, if it was approved to put up. I, I, it's just my, my opinion. Uh, we already kind of do this, because we did it with the MLK panels. Uh, we did issue approval for those. And it's, um, it's, it's the same kind of deal. But, but I, but I do know that it does get touchy. I've talked with the City Attorney a lot about this, and they're actually in the process now of putting together an overarching policy, because it goes beyond just a mural on a wall. It also goes to somebody that wants to do a temporary, uh, artistic presentation at a public park. And, and how do we govern that? And how do we, how do we continue to provide some level of control? And of course, when, when we allow a, as we, as the City Attorney and I discussed, if you allow a, a political statement to be made on public space, then you really do, I think, open Pandora's box, because then you'll have every other entity that wants to offer a contrary or corroborating political perspective. So after speaking with the City Attorney, not, he can answer all this, but, um, by, by creating a policy that does what these, this group i- is doing, and that is keeping it apolitical. It's not political. It's, it's to promote and, and to inspire, and it's to, uh, provide a celebration of our community. I think it's easier for us to try to keep that kind of focus a little narrower. You still have issues, because you still have subjectivity as to what is enlightening, what is, what is uplifting. But I think that's at least a much narrower lane than if we allow it to become a political situation. I've had calls from a number of people, as all of y'all have, and emails. And, uh, when I explained that this is not sponsored by a national or a state organization. This is sponsored by a group of, uh, enterprising folks associated with our university. And then when I told them that ultimately, and I trust these folks, but ultimately, if they bring something that Council doesn't think is appropriate, it doesn't go on there. So to me, the safeguards were, were in, 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 in place. And, and they need to be, because we're already doing some of this, and we just need to kind of get out in, in front of it. So, I agree with you.
And Mayor, if I could add one thing, that I, I appreciate the, the concern and the, the discussion about how to display public art. To me, there, there is a difference between this and the Martin Luther King Jr. Outdoor Learning Trail, which I've supported since I first learned about it, because that trail is gonna lay out history, it's fact. And we all need to know that history, and many of us don't. I've been educated by reading through those panels and appreciate very much that process. Art's a little different, because as you noted, how people view it is very subjective. And, and that's what worries me about going down the road of painting government structures with something that we know, to some degree, is gonna be subjective. And, and what I fear is the reaction we're gonna get from other groups that are gonna want their square footage of space, whatever their square footage is. And I, I'm just worried about it.
Well, and I, I understand, I don't wanna get in a back and forth, but I think that's what we've done with the Martin Luther King Learning Trail. That is fact, it's history. But there are other folks that have different aspects of history and, and a different historical perspective. So you're still gonna have, we're still gonna have to deal with that. So I would just, I, I would say it's a conundrum, because we're gonna have to wrestle with it going forward, no matter what. Counselor Thomas?
Uh, as, uh, the Mayor Protem said, this is the first time we've seen this, um, this particular memorandum of understanding. Uh, it's not what was presented in our packet, um, that the Council received last Friday. I have some questions about some of the wording that's in this MOU. And I don't know, uh, if the City Manager is the proper person to answer, or if someone from CSU would be the proper person. But my first question is the first sentence of the MOU that says it's made and entered in, uh, into this blank day, whatever that happens to be, of August 2020. And then later on in the document, it says, "will remain in effect for one year of the date of this agreement." If we adopt this today, we are in October, we are not in August. Does that have any impact? Does that bother anybody else?
Well, obviously it does, and, and, um, I mean, this started in August, and that date just has not been updated to October, where we are now discussing. And we've been delaying it since August.
We've never had the copy of the MOU before today. We've had discussions about the painting and the wall and so forth, but I don't recall having a copy of the actual MOU until this Council meeting.
Yeah, and staff is saying it was with the last agenda before it was delayed. But I don't, I don't guess we need to get into the...
Okay. The other thing that I, another question that I have, it says that, uh, CSU has submitted externally a grant proposal to fund the public art initiative. And I believe you said that was with the Knight Foundation.
That's correct.
If the Knight Foundation does not issue the grant, what then?
We have other, um, support group that will fund the, fund the project, and we're working on it. And the next it would be, keep applying for grants to make this happen.
Uh, one of the, uh, I have, I've worked with grants in a past life, and I know that sometimes it takes a while to get all this done. Again, the October date is of a concern to me. If we enter into this memorandum in October, and it takes you six months to get a, um, a grant, and know that you're gonna be able to do the, the painting on, on the wall or whatever, uh, and then go through the process that you, uh, outlined about, uh, asking for submissions and all that, this MOU may be over and done with by then.
Well...
Is that a concern at all, Mr. City Manager?
And I, I think, I think we can figure out that, you know, from the date that the grant's secured, or the date that the painting actually appears on the wall, that it go for twelve months. I mean, those are, I, I understand you want to see those things, but, you know, typically, when we do things like RFPs, we go and negotiate, and we come back and bring you the final solution, or it, uh, but, but those are all, we can figure out how to get this done.
Well, and, and as you know, I'm a stickler for words.
Yes.
And so if, if it says we're gonna do this in, you know, twelve months, then twelve months is what we're gonna do then.
But I think, Madam Counselor, if you say to me that we support what they're trying to do in public arts, you all figure out all the details and bring back the final details, and we can bring those back to you. I mean, we can figure out how to do this, rather than not how to do it, get it done. I, I'm, I'm very sure that my team can figure it out. If you say, "I like the idea of the public art, we're gonna, we, we, we're gonna work with CSU," and, and, yeah, we can figure it out. It, it's not, this is not complicated for, for us.
The other, um, one of the other issues that I have, it also says in item 1B, "The city shall approve the art concept and review plans prior to the start of the project." Uh, that brings two issues to my mind. Uh, one is, when we originally started talking about this, and the MOU that we received on Friday said that the theme of this would be, uh, social justice and equity. That's not what is in this document. Uh, and so one of my questions would be, uh, what is the, what is going to be the theme? What does that mean? The second is, do we, do we as a Council approve the actual, whatever's going up, the actual painting? Or do we just approve the concept of the actual painting? And the third piece of that, again, is from somebody who is a wordsmith, and that we will review the plans prior to the start of the project.
I believe...
I get that one, but suppose somebody down the line, as the project is going forward, has a diff- has some, let's add this. You know, does that have to come back to Council? And, Mr. City Manager, I understand that you're, you've got a terrific staff, and they can probably figure all this out. But when we put this in writing, that means something. And it may not mean that I would challenge it, but it certainly would be open to challenges from other, um, other sources. That, that's one of my concerns. I, I think I interrupted you.
No, I, I'm sorry I interrupted you as you're asking the questions. I believe that, um, the process of approval, from your point, has been, once it gets to the Council back again, it would have gone through a series of, of approval. And what we present to you is the artwork that we are going to ask for your approval. It, there would be no other contingency on, on top of that. And, a- as far as, uh, the planning goes, um, once we know the artwork, what the artwork is, we will present a plan to you, how it's gonna be applied, how the process of all the things that the artists will include in their proposal.
Uh, okay, thank you. I also have, uh, some of the same concerns that I heard Counselor House and Mayor Protem Allen. If you have not been on Second Avenue and 38th Street, on that corner, there's a, a building that has a, um, mural on it that was painted a couple of years ago when we were doing, when the, um...
Columbus 2020.
Pictures of the Valley were, were done. That is attached to that wall. It's not painted on that wall. And it looks great. Uh, there was another one in that same series that was down at, uh, about Sixth Avenue and Eighth Street or Seventh Street on a building down there that, as, as Counselor, uh, Mayor Protem Allen said, is attached to the wall. It's not necessarily painted on the wall. Counselor House's comment, I also, um, have some concerns about our painting public, putting paintings on public property that are not, um, well, I'm not sure, I, I, uh, that could be controversial in the community. We, we have tried very diligently, I think this Council has, and this administration has, to make sure that whatever we put on public property, um, is not controversial. I have received, as you've already heard, numerous, um, emails. Some of them were addressing the issue of what the content of this painting would be. Uh, some of them were, uh, addressing the issue of using public property to do this. Some of them were addressing the issue of using public property to do this. We have a, an ordinance on the book that says you can't put a political sign, you as a, as a private citizen cannot put a political sign on the city right of way. If you do, we're going to take it up, and we're going to charge you for doing that.
We are...
And so some of the, some of the concerns that have been raised to me has been, how does this differ from, from that that's already there? And it's, it is a matter of interpretation. And it, you know, whoever happens to be in power at the time has the authority to interpret, I guess. I, I just am real nervous about this, about this memorandum and putting this on public property. If you came to us and said to us, will you support our going to a private property owner and requesting permission to do this on the side of their building? I would tell you, go right ahead. I think that's a terrific idea. It's the fact that it's on public property that I'm somewhat concerned about.
And, and I think that's a very valid concern. And, you know, as a citizen, one of our intention here, that we, we are focusing on the idea of racial justice and social justice. But the theme really that fits Columbus is the idea of hope, healing, and community. That is what we're all about. I don't know if we're ever going to avoid controversies when we put something in a public domain. Even if it's in a private sector, it becomes very public. And I think our intention is also that, you know, coming to all of you brings up, brings up some really good support of, for, from our leaders of a community. I think this is a really valid approach that we're doing, because we are all about partnership. And, and actually, when we started this, we just started getting more and more community partners from all over Columbus that are interested in what we're doing, and how we, how they can approach us to also provide a voice for them. And I, I know that this is a very difficult part, from your point of view, to, for, to approve, because it is a Pandora's box, as the mayor said. And I think that if we, this is the time and moment that we ask each of you to vote a yes on this approval, because it is the time where newer generation of, especially my student, I always think about them consistently, how can I support their voice, and what, what are the things that are important to them? And, you know, art is one of those things, a vehicle for this type of conversation. And again, we are very sensitive to what the community, how the community will react to this mural. And, you know, hence, that, that's why I think you guys have the last to say. Once you see that artwork and you feel like it is controversial, you can say no to it.
I will tell you that if you have been receiving communication from organizations, or companies, or individuals in the community who support this, they have not been contacting me. Every email I have received has asked me to vote no. And included in that is the information that we have gotten from Piedmont Columbus Regional, that they also oppose this there, in that particular location, because of the implication that they think the community will have, that this is somehow Piedmont, because of the surrounding facilities there are all Piedmont. So if, if you've been receiving positives, I will tell you, I have not received any positives on this issue. Thank you, Mr. ...
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, I guess I'm positive about the correspondence, because as City Manager of Columbus, Georgia, I've not received a first email, text message from any business, citizen, or a city council member about this. So maybe if, if I had received a forwarded email from a council member, or from a business, or from an individual, I would, I would understand the concern that's out there. But, and I asked staff, have you all received a single email? And they said, no. So I don't know how, as City Manager of Columbus, Georgia, all of this correspondence is going on around me, and I haven't seen, received a single email. Well, but normally, council members would, normally, council members would forward something. I haven't received a forwarded email from anyone.
And I think most of the emails I've received have been on misinformation. They were misinformed, so we straightened them out, and, not straightened them out, but we, we shared with them some information, and then most of their issues went away. But there are a lot of, you know, very good points being brought up by council members. And, and again, I think it all is going to end up centering on if we want to, if we want to allow public art on our public spaces. And I think that there's a lot of different ways we've heard. I will mention, because it was asked, I think, by Councilor House, I've already talked with the city attorney about beginning to develop an overarching policy, whether that's stated through a resolution, or whether it actually needs to be an ordinance. But at least lays down some parameters, as Councilor House was alluding to, that, that we can use when evaluating, you can use when evaluating whether or not something is benefiting the whole community. So, Councilor Davis?
Thanks, Mayor. I will tell you, the, Mr. City Manager, probably, I don't know why you didn't receive any emails and contacts, but I can tell you that out in the community, what's been out there is that the council is considering making a move, making a decision. That's probably why we got all the calls on. I too received calls, emails, and, and text messages. But, look, in listening today, I mean, I have a few comments, but in listening today, I still, I personally think this needs some more work. You know, there's a lot of things going on right now, a lot of things. We're in the middle of election year. People are voting right now. I mean, it's, there's a lot of sensitivity out there, and just emotions. I've never seen so many emotions going in different ways. And it worries me, and it concerns me, and part of my responsibility is making sure that that doesn't enter into our community and have a serious effect on the temperament of our community, and maybe from a, from an image standpoint. I do think that this matter maybe got out ahead of itself a little too fast, and that's maybe why people took a different, maybe looked at it from a different perspective and had concerns. I do know the history in this community, and I've dealt with it. We've had challenges, we have people that are still haven't gotten over the matter of what used to be a, a cross in a park, where Easter services were held, and the veterans were honored, and, you know, this city took a stance on that. I didn't support it, but the city took a stance on that. We've recently had the city take some stances on issues of where we just said we were not. It said at this body, we were not going to create anything that was going to be divisive, divisive, controversial to anybody. And we made some pretty serious decisions, to the point of lawsuits being threatened, and had to spend money legally to, to deal with that. So, like it or not, people look at things different, and certainly anything that gives the presence. And it might have got out in the environment of where we're at today, and we've got, there's so many stories circulating, so many things happen, more information comes out every day that sometimes you don't know who to believe or what to believe, but we're just fed all this stuff, and it creates controversy, it creates divisiveness, it creates polarization. And I don't want that in our community. And I was very proud the day the City Manager and our Millennial Roundtable Committee came to us and put a, we will not tolerate racism in this government, in our community. And they brought that before us, and I was very proud. Reverend Flakes came up, and, and he really touched my heart that day. When he came up, we basically said, you know, that we're going to practice the golden rule. Do unto others as you would have them to do unto you. Love your neighbors, you'd love yourself, you'd want to be treated or loved. And the City Manager made sure, along with others, that there was unity for all, equality for all. And we covered everybody. We're not going to tolerate this for anybody, and that's the way it should be. So, I think, in saying that, I mean, the initiative, when I came in here today, you know, I took a change of heart because of all these concerns. I had to really look at it, and my impression of it initially, with what I, the information I was getting, was not what it is now, and I'm kind of looking at this a little bit different, but I'm not all the way there. I did have some conversations early on, that, that, what I'm seeing now is starting to reflect that with some, some people, and, and, but this has not got out, the community has not had a chance to see this. And I think with what, this is a, you know, some people may say, what's the big deal? But this is, it could be a serious matter. And when we do MOUs, it's always on MOUs without getting it all worked out. That's why I got concerned sometimes, and we delay these things, because really, you're asking the council to approve it. After that, we don't know where it's going. So we're just approving it on word. And, you know, sometimes you got to show me. You know, don't tell me, show me. And, I mean, I would like to see, what I'm hearing today is that, I think what would really help out is what the council members, what I hear the council members trying to do, is we're trying to get some, some peace and some confidence, that we can kind of spread it out in the community and get everybody back on the same page. We're not there yet. I don't sense that we're there yet. I don't know what my colleagues feel, but I don't sense that we're there yet. I'm open to it, but I need some time to get back out there, and based on this new information that we have today, and, and certainly share with my constituents and others what we're trying to accomplish, and, and hoping that we can bring them to the table. I think that's the right thing to do. I almost think that we need another meeting of a development kind of. I mean, what I'm hearing from, from the Art Department is somewhat of a development meeting, where you can come and show us actually what you're trying to develop. I think the picture of what you're trying to accomplish would go a long ways versus an MOU. I mean, I would like to, kind of the, the cart and the horse, or the horse and the cart kind of thing comes to my mind, when, you know, you say, well, just go ahead and prove the MOU, but we'll come back and bring you some samples later. And we just don't, it's an unknown right now. We don't know. And I think that creates just a little, you know, well, it creates just people being uncomfortable at this point. Not that anybody's against it, unless they have a valid, I mean, I respect everybody's concerns on the matter, but I am concerned about, once we go down this path, policy, those are some good things that we talked about today. Those need to be ironed out, I think. Because I, I always sit up here and say, I'm going to be fair, I'm going to be just, and I'm going to be equal with everybody. And I try to, I try to do that. Do I fail? Yeah, I fail. I'm not perfect. But I try, and I want to make sure that the message we send, that we don't open up the door, that I've got other groups that believe their cause is really, really strong and powerful, and they can make good arguments, that they want a, some space somewhere to, to promote their, their message. So I, you know, I, I'm a little further along than this morning when I came in here. Now, I mean, this was just passed out to us with this information, and there's been some good dialogue and conversation about things we need to do. I mean, one of the questions, several questions that were asked to me about this, well, why, if, if the CSU's involved, and it's the Art Department, then why don't they, you know, why don't they start on their own campuses, and their own buildings, or their own facilities? I don't, you know, that's hard to answer, but that is a question that's out there. You know, I've even heard the private buildings, they talk about a private, some people talk about, let them put it on billboards. You can still accomplish the same goal, but we are talking about public property, and when we do that as a council, knowing without more, I guess, solidifying the documents, we, we are somewhat opening the door for other entities to also have a, you know, an opportunity to. That's going to be hard to do, but, I mean, I would like to be a little more comfortable in where we're going with this, and having the time to go back out and help people understand what this mission is, what this goal is, and maybe change some of those, you know, people that might have viewed it as, this is negative, or this is not going to help our city, you know, and, and maybe give me the opportunity to come from talking more from a positive, and this is, this is not, you know, what it was perceived, it's something different. I think that's the right thing to do in this situation, because this is a big request, and I can't see how anybody would disagree with that, if, you know, and try, if we're really trying to push to make something good happen. I am encouraged by some of the new language that, some council members said that was not the language earlier, and that is true, and that's probably what led to some of the, you know, some of the interpretations, negative or positive. But, you know, that's our charge, that's our responsibility, is to make sure that we're looking out for all citizens in our respective districts. And, you know, I hope that, that, you know, that everybody could somewhat agree with that, and, and work towards solidifying this, and, and getting more documents, the, the necessary work that we need to do to have a, a, a better understanding, and a more solid understanding out in the community.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I don't want to prolong this discussion or conversation, but if, if, if I hear the council saying, clean up the agreement, and answer a few more questions, and, and come back, I'm happy to do that. And I'm trying to be clear about what I, I'm hearing. And so, I, I just, just some clear direction would be good for me at the moment, because, you know, these are tough, I, I agree, these are, we're, we're living in tough times where there's a lot of division, not, I mean, all across this country. I mean, it's, I mean, tough times. And, and, and it's not an easy subject for some during this tough time. But, you know, because I, I mean, I've heard a lot today, and, and I'd love to, for someone to share some of the letters or emails they've gotten, text messages, just share one or two with me. I, I just kind of want to get a feel for what's being said, because the talk is going all around me, and I don't get it. And my staff, I ask them, have you gotten a text or email? We'd just like to know, so we know what we're dealing with. Right now, we're, I understand that the mayor and council are dealing with what you're hearing, but as City Manager of the city of Columbus, Georgia, I haven't gotten one text or one email, so I, I have no clue of what's being communicated to the mayor or members of council in writing. Please share some of that with me. I don't know why I don't have it, but I'd love to see some of it. But, you know, I've heard the conversation, I mean, we, we deal with, and I don't want to judge art either, but we've got monuments, we've got flag issues, we've got, we name buildings, we name streets, we name built bridges, intersection, we name parks, we name benches, we know, name outdoor learning centers, and on and on. So this is not anything new. It's, it's different, but it's all the same. And so, but I want to make sure council members are comfortable, and the citizens of Columbus are comfortable. So if I could know what's being communicated, and if I could know that what council wants, want... want to see in the agreement, we can, we can bring you something and try and make sure that we're taking care of the concerns of the constituents who are communicating with you. So, and I would say to the group, I mean, I, I don't know, I know you from seeing you around, but I have, I didn't, I wasn't part of your committee, you had no discussions with me, I don't know where you came from, but I know who you are now, and I know that you're trying to do something good for the community in your mind, so, and, and I want to try and work to pull it all together. And so, you've heard from council members, and I'll try and get some more information, and we'll try and figure it out, and see if I can help.
So, we're happy to update our presentation and meet with any council members and the city manager whenever it's convenient for you guys, so I'll follow up with the email after this meeting.
And I just wanted to add, reiterate a couple of things. I know when we initially talked about this, we did, in our presentation, we did have the Black Lives Matter out there as, as what other cities were doing in the United States. And we saw that as an opportunity for Columbus to also, to embrace that in listening to the comments and talking to different people, and then doing our research and understanding. There is a big difference between the, the slogan, Black Lives Matter, and the organization, Black Lives Matter. And so, we recognized that and decided that for Columbus, that is not the direction that we wanted to go in. So, we pulled back. And so, when we say unity, and we look at the different, our community in general, what we are trying to embrace is the different cultures here, what's represented in Columbus. I don't see where people would argue with, if you saw two people on, two children on a mural of different races together, that's unity. Those are the type of things that we're looking at. When you think about Disney and what they did to embrace when Chadwick Boseman died, and they immediately put up the black, him with a young child to show that they embraced that. Even though art is very controversial, you can always have something up that someone is not going to agree with, but how can you argue how that brings people together to embrace the message that he stands for and the mission that he was after? And so, it's those type of things that we're trying to do in Columbus. And sometimes, being on the panel, it does get a little frustrating, because I do understand, and looking at art, you're always going to have something that is very, somebody can take, it can be a flower. One person might be in love with that flower, someone else might think that this is not, I mean, something's wrong with that flower. So, it's always going to be those type of discussions that you have. But I feel like if we can move forward and embrace the fact that we are trying to bring our community together through art, you're, you're going to have that discussion. Somebody is going to love it. It can say inspiration, it can say words. Someone is going to be in love with it, someone else is going to say they could have chose a whole different slogan. So, I just want you guys to take that into consideration. We are more than welcome and willing to adapt what we need to, but we do feel like public art is definitely needed in our community, and how it can unite us and bring us together. I mean, we see that happening in different phases around the city, but we definitely need to have a start somewhere. So, I just want you to think about that as you sit back and, and you look through the memorandum. There are things that we can change. It does not have to be anything that's controversial per se, but just know that anything that we put out there, regardless, there is always going to be one or two people that are going to find a problem with it. So, I just feel like we have to get past that mindset so that we can move forward, and we can have public art in Columbus.
Thank you. Shere.
I also want to include that this is why it was important for Columbus State University to reach out, you know, and find partners such as kidspreneur Sharika Daye and Becca Sajak with Dragonfly Trail Network, and amongst others. And I think this is one of those things that will continue to be asked from the city in the future. And, you know, we're asking today, but this is not going to happen overnight. We need your permission to do it, because it is you who will be the biggest supporter of our initiative.
Hannah and Sharika, thank you both for your comments. I called Becca yesterday, and, and we, we had a pretty in-depth conversation about this, and this is what we talked about, is that, is that the artwork that would be able to celebrate the diversity of Columbus, as a military town, we have people from all around the globe, and to be able to reflect that on a public space, again, it gets back to the public art component. If you, I think if you embrace public art, the fact that this is a, a commitment from our university, that this is going to be a celebratory mural that will show people from all different areas of our community, ages, genders, ethnicity, and, and to me, I trust this council. So, I trust them, if they have the final say-so on, "Yeah, it's a little pushing it too much," that they will make that known and it'll be changed. So, I, I understand, we've got a number of councillors that still want to be heard. Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. First of all, to the city manager, I apologize for not forwarding emails that I've received, and I will get you some of that information. To your point about giving you some direction and some guidelines so you know where to, where to go with this, I believe that we should set the policy first. The mayor said that we have started an ordinance or a policy on public art. Maybe if we finished that policy first, then it would give you the guidelines that you need to follow for this mutual, you know, this piece of, this, what is it called? Mutual of Understanding?
Memorandum.
Memorandum of Understanding. Thank you. So, I recommend that we start with the policy first, and then we have, we can build this memorandum of understanding upon the policy. About the city property, I think what we need to, to look at is that the city property should not be the canvas. The city property should be the wall that the canvas is placed on. So, nothing is permanent, nothing is painted on the city property, but it can be placed there as Mayor Protem recommended. It's attached to the wall. I think that's a big step forward. I don't, I, I think we, I think as the city loses some of its control over our property when we allow people to paint it. I'm in real estate, and I'm in property management, and I understand how paint can create some permanent damage, and how difficult it is to cover paint up. And so, I'm not quite sure that I want something painted on these walls. I think it creates a situation, there's, there's language in here that talks about whose responsibility it is to maintain. There's a wall that needs to be maintained, and then there's art that needs to be maintained. And so, I think there needs to be a differentiation between the two, and I think by attaching something to the wall instead of painting the wall, that can create that clear differentiation. I think that we do need to delay this a little bit, because there's some other things that I think we can solidify that will protect the city as well as you, the artists. One of the, one of the things is, I think that the city should, I think that the CSU should be responsible for the maintaining of the art and things like that, but then I think the city shouldn't give their power away to CSU to have like a certain period of time. We give you notice to correct something, and if it's not done in a certain period of time, we take over. I don't think we should give our complete power away. Never a good idea. And then, about the discussion of the art and how it can create unity, I'm, I totally agree with that. I went to a college in Southern California, and one of our annual activities was to go around to art museums, and I remember one time, the person that I was with, you know, I'd look at the painting and I'd say, "Oh, I like that," and then we'd, I'd, I'd want to move on. Well, my date for that day said, grabbed my arm and pulled me back, and he says, "No, wait, take a look at it. You know, what feeling does it evoke? What," you know, and we had a discussion. And we didn't necessarily agree on every point, but we had the discussion, and so it does open it up for discussion and the opportunity for, to create unity, where it gives you, maybe it can teach us how to have that discussion again without getting all offended. We can just have, and, you know, it's little steps like that that can, that can take us back to where it used to be, where you can have discussions without people taking the extreme sides. And so, I, I get it, I, I'm not totally against the whole thing, but I still think we've made some progress. I think we need to make some more before we can agree on this.
Thank you, councillor. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me go ahead and offer these thoughts to the city manager as far as, or the city attorney's office, as far as the MOU and the amendments. One thing that occurred to me as we dip our toe in the water and we start to work together on this was starting off slow, and instead of offering up the whole wall, was limiting that, limiting that to a space. And I was trying to compare it to the size of a billboard, so I just sent a text to a friend of mine in the billboard industry, and he came back with, with square foot, so I was, the largest billboard he has is roughly 672 square feet, so I was thinking, "Let's just start with 1,000." So, let's limit it to 1,000 square feet. So, Mr. City Manager, for your information and, and the city attorney, if y'all could reword this to add some type of description in there regarding a, a limited size instead of the whole wall, and also, under one, city obligations, number B, item B, the city shall approve an art concept. I would like to strike the word "concept," and so that it would read, "The city shall approve the art and review the plans prior to the start of the project." Under item two, CSU obligations, that would be two B, the CSU will be required to provide a traffic plan to the city manager and traffic engineers. If you could add that language in. Under that same section, item C, there's some grammatical changes that need to be taken care of in that sentence, but my intent there is to add that if there's, I think it should read something like this, "Should the project not be executed in accordance with the approval, with the approved concept and plans, CSU will agree to remove the noncompliant artist material at its own expense within three days." So, I would like to add a time period in there. Under item two D, CSU is responsible for all maintenance of the wall during the period of this con, this contract is in effect, and I would like to add the following language, "To include weather vandalism and auto-related activities, the work shall be started within five business days." Mayor, thanks for the time, that's all I have. I would like to offer that in a form of, I guess, I'm presenting it to the city manager, do we need to vote on those items individually, or just?
Well, I would, I would think if we're going to, yeah, if, if the, if the sentiment of council is to bring this back and delay it, then we can get this MOU put together and then, and then send that out and get that back as well. And then that way, if there's anything that maybe one councillor doesn't think needs to be in there, or wants to add something, then they can address that individually.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Davis?
Yes, Mayor. I think, you know, taking steps at a time is not a, not a bad thing, and I, I want everybody to realize today that this has probably been a very, very valuable, important discussion, it's a positive discussion, because what we're actually doing is give the public an opportunity now to hear, and it's going to be aired, and now they can start, you know, listening and understanding a little bit better, and, and maybe having a different, different perspective on this. I think that's what you're trying to accomplish as well when, when you talk about unity, which is, which is positive. So, I am encouraged from that standpoint, but, Ms. City Manager, I, I, you asked what, you're looking for guidance. One of the things is simple, I mean, I'm going to, I think my, my fellow colleagues have offered up some, some changes to the, to the MOU, some legal wording to the, to the MOU, but, I mean, I would like, I think it would go, not just me, but, you know, it would help me, I'm just going to tell you, it would help me big time, and probably would help our community if you could just, you know, I called it a minute ago, like a development step, I mean, how the department, the art department, where, how you're going to go about this, and maybe bring a, a presentation of some examples. Don't mean that's it, that's the art you're going with, but give us some prototypes, give us some, an idea. I think when people see it, they can grasp it, they can hang on to it, and they're going to have a different, you know, interpretation of it, and probably feel a lot better. I think the thing, we're dealing with words right now. We're all speaking words and going in different directions. That's the same thing that's happening out in the community, that, you know, I'm trying to, you know, work on that end, and, and trying to share what the, what the goal is. But, you know, at the end of the day, this could be very, very positive for our community. I mean, who knows? It could be a spark plug, a jumpstart all around the nation, and healing, that's what we do need, is healing. I was encouraged to watch a lot of the football games this weekend, and just, you know, just seeing how they've approached this matter of, of unity and equality and togetherness, you know, everybody, let's do this together. I mean, that's what, I was, you know, Bruce will tell you, Bruce is the same as me, we, we came up in the athletic world and sports, and it's team, it's all team. I mean, you don't get anything accomplished without working together, and he knows that, I know that, and that's kind of my mentality. So, you know, I'd like to get everybody on board. I think just the city manager doing that, maybe in the near future, as you work on the MOU, if, as soon as possible, I don't know how long it would take to do your development, but maybe come back and show us. You know, maybe and show us how the art department works so people can see more about how, how you guys do things over there. And I tell you, the assuring thing from me, and probably for the community as well, and you mentioned it, about your own step with the university, how you have to go through some approvals, not just asking us, but you have to go through approvals. I mean, that speaks volumes too, because, you know, it goes back to what I was talking about, image, and certainly the university would not own anything that would, you know, damage their reputation. So, that's a good thing. I didn't know that until you said it today, so that's a good thing. But people are going to be watching this and, and hearing it, and I think maybe they'll, you know, they could have a different view on it by, by next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Huff?
Ladies, ladies, thank you for your patience. I have one request, first of all. I want to know if it's possible, would you mind some of us being on your committee?
Not at all.
I'd like to ask the mayor.
Yeah, not, not at all.
Okay, I'd like to ask the mayor, I'd like to be a part of it, if you could maybe appoint three of us or so to serve with them in putting policy together, but I would really like to serve. And with Mr. City Manager, I know you've made most of the trips, on the inner-city trips, and I know we saw some things in Austin, Texas, that was way different in bringing community together with the arts world and the, the new wave of younger millennials and so forth, the Z-Generation. Greenville, South Carolina, also. Uh, Greenville, South Carolina also, we're doing some things differently as far as art is concerned. So if we could kind of take some of that into consideration. We all serve different constituents here in the city. So I don't want you to be frustrated this morning. We hear you. I especially hear you because I have some artsy-type people between music and painting and everything that are personal friends and family members. So I understand that you're doing it from deep within, and you don't get involved in all of the politics that happen sometimes. So we have a lot of people we have to listen to. We have emails we need to forward to the city manager so he can get a good grip on what's really going on. But, uh, I just, I say thank you. I think I've sat with most of you all in the past and spoken with you. So I know you're headed down the right road. Now, if you would, uh, cause I want the council to really hear. If you would go back through all of the hoops that you have to jump through before we get to the point of the actual painting. If you would walk back through that.
Sure. Um, so in the beginning, before we present any of the, present the artwork, we would have to do a call for art with a theme based on and focusing on, um, on healing, hope, and community. This is gonna be a very important part of that call. Um, we are opening it up for submission, um, you know, nationally, regionally, and locally. Um, so once we receive all of those submissions, we will go through a review process with the Department of Art faculty members, who's part of the programming committee. And then it will be presented, the winner of that selection will be presented to the Chair of the Department for Approval, the College of the Arts Dean for Approval, the Provost of the University, and President, um, Dr. Mark Wood. And then, we will then present that to you for approval.
As well as our grantors, which there's several, so as well as our grantors, there are several, um, different, uh, people that we, organizations that we have received funding from in addition to the Knight Foundation that we're currently, um, in the process of receiving funding for. We will also have to get approval, um, with the Ronald McDonald House and Piedmont Columbus Regional. Both of, um, those CEOs have been notified about this project and have, have sent emails, which again, I'm happy to forward to the city manager, saying they are open to seeing the concept. They have not said it is confirmed without seeing the concept. But, um, those are the two stakeholders that are closest to this particular wall. And then in addition to that, we will also be talking to the local neighborhoods to get their feedback.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure that the constituency, the public listening, understands that as the city manager pulls things together and the mayor appoints myself and some others to come work with you, that they understand there are a lot of components and a lot of people interested and invested in this, not to embarrass Columbus, Georgia, but to enhance our community and what we're all about. So, thank you. Keep your heads up and, uh, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, maybe, maybe, um, I recommend somebody from Piedmont or the Ronald McDonald House to be on that committee also. And then to Mayor Protem's recommendation about adding some of the language of, um, within three days, if not, um, you know, about the timeframe, you know, we need to add some language that if it's not done within that timeframe, it's given, given power back to the city to take their actions.
Okay. Counselor Thomas?
One of the things that I would recommend that, uh, not only you, if you have not done this, but everyone in the community, to go down to the, um, garage, that parking garage that is across the street from the River Center. And on the side of that building are some panels that, um, have the poem, uh, "My River Valley", a love letter to our city that was written by, uh, Isaiah Harper, who, uh, just happens to be, uh, an adopted nephew of mine. But it talks about our city and the unity that's there. And I think that will give you a, a terrific idea, um, as you go forward with this. And, uh, Shereka, I wanted to tell you too, I'm, I'm not opposed to controversy. In fact, um, some people say I seek it out. My grandmother used to say that, um, I don't always agree with everything that anybody does. And she said, "Nobody agrees with everything." That's why they make chocolate and vanilla ice cream. I don't understand people who don't like chocolate ice cream. How can you not like chocolate ice cream? But just because it is controversial does not say to me, "We ought not do it." Um, what, what my concern is, as has been said several times, is this is public property and we need to be very careful how we move forward with it. So, uh, don't, don't take, please don't take my comments this morning, uh, in any way other than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Tucker?
Thank you. You all have a, um, an actual program. It was something that you presented the first meeting where I think you were having like a presentation. And what's that, that schedule? That way the public may, um, be able to actually, um, view, I don't know if it's virtual or in-person, to get more clarification of what you're doing in, in this initiative.
Um, I think that what would be, what would be best is to go back in our planning committee to reschedule some of these things that we're doing. Because a, a part of our, part of our, um, um, our initiative today is to go, to get your approvals so that we can go forward. Um, so right now, we did have a schedule, but that schedule is gonna be delayed upon what's gonna happen with the MOU so we can go forward.
Thank you. And one more question. Uh, would it be in our best interest to have maybe a public meeting? Or just like we're doing with the, um, Citizens Review Board or with the police chief? That way the public can understand because right now with the initial meeting, people really think that you are connected with Black Lives Matter. And we really need to clarify that you're not, that you are promoting healing, hope, and community. Um, and I truly appreciate what you're doing because I am a social justice activist who organized the first protest that we had with My Black Has A Purpose. So I know what you're doing. It's for promoting positivity and unity in our city. And we are living in historic times. This is just like the Civil Rights Movement or ERA or Voting Rights, you know, amendment, anything. It's, it's the same exact thing. We're living in history right now. And I think that people need to have a better understanding of what you're doing because I do think that you all are trying to promote something positive.
Well, and, and Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I, Counselor Tucker, um, I, I do believe, or I'm hopeful at least, that we can get to a conclusion in a, in a smaller, I, I think if you start having public meetings about this, it's gonna become something other than what it's about. And, and so, because we can see here in this room, I mean, people are out there listening. And, um, you know, and I don't know what they think. But I, I recall when Reverend Adrian Chester was standing there and he talked about sneaky suspicion. We don't need to let this turn into a sneaky suspicion. And I'm afraid that it might go there. And so I believe it can be, I, I, you know, I would hope that with what we, that we can talk through this. You know, when I listen to the steps that, uh, they are going through, I mean, there's a, I mean, and Counselor Huff just asked for it. When I hear them say that it's going through the arts department, it's going through the Chair of the Arts Department, it's going through the Dean at CSU, it's going through the Provost at CSU, it's going, uh, to Piedmont, you've talked to them, you've talked to the McDonald House, you're gonna talk to the community, you're talking to the Knight Foundation. You, someone said the Chamber, the Chamber of Commerce. You got the dragon flag. I mean, this is, all these people, all these organizations, the Chamber and Community Foundation, all of them are involved. And then it's gonna come to council and with a policy. And council members get to vet it. That's a pretty, that's a pretty doggone thorough process with the stakeholders who want to promote this community, like the Chamber involved. And so I, I just, I, I think we can probably work through it without, I don't disagree with public meetings and public engagement. But I just.
I, oh.
I was gonna say, let me re, let me reword that. Maybe a town hall, like a one-meeting informational session. Because people, the, the emails that we have received, and I did forward them to you, um, Mr. City Manager, I just did.
Okay.
Um, they, they really aren't clear about what they are doing. They're, they're correlating them to Black Lives Matter, which is a political organization, which this group is not a political organization. Just like what we did when we came together to bring the mayor, the Chief of Police, and everybody else, you know, with, in the city together. We did that just because of unity, and this is what they are doing. And unfortunately, our, our citizens are thinking that they are associated with Black Lives Matter. So I'm saying, I'm suggesting that we have some type of informational, even if it's not the city that's doing it, but you all have an informational, um, virtual Zoom or, or something on Facebook Live where you're actually giving the information about who you are, what you represent, what, what's your point, you know, what you're trying to do. Because right now, you're trying to convince the 50% that, that's not supporting you. Not many, but the other 50% that's not supporting you.
Yeah. And I, I just wanna also say, um, I was really inspired by the first Sunday, um, meeting, town hall meeting that, um, Mayor Henderson put together right before COVID started. I was one of my, I was one of the audience in that. And I, I think a lot of the things that was brought up was public art. And I, you know, and I think that was a really good way to bring in the community to, to talk about what they need and what they want.
Well, Hannah, thank you. I, listen, this is, represents a change. It represents a, a move down a path that I think is gonna, at least from the folks I've talked to, has an opportunity to really distinguish our community, uh, along with a couple of others. And, uh, and after hearing from Becca when we talked individually and then listening to y'all, I, I think this is just a process that we've gotta go through. Uh, one thing I would, I would mention though, I think this needs to stay CSU's project. I mean, I, I think the fact, it's just my opinion. I think the fact that council has final approval on the content is, is plenty. That's a lot of control. So I, I think y'all need to kind of keep that your project. I do like what Counselor Huff said, and if a couple of, uh, city counselors want to meet with you and, and talk about philosophies, I, I think that may be very productive. But I will reach out to y'all if you, because I was asked to appoint some people. It may be easier if y'all just have a lunch or something and open it up to the folks to come and, and talk about it. But, uh, believe it or not, we have no more counselors queued up for any questions. So where we stand, Mr. City Manager, as I get it, is we've got a couple of options. We can either make a motion and approve a delay, or we can approve some, none, or all of the Mayor Protem's recommended amendments. Or we can vote on this up or down today. Although I, I think we've got, yeah, we, we, um, we don't have a quorum here right now, so we can't take any action on any of it.
Well, yeah, they just stepped away, but they'll.
Yeah, I think we're going to get a couple more counselors. And, and please thank your student for being here. I'm, I'm, she probably had a, at least two class.
She had class, yeah.
I was gonna say, she probably had at least two she had to attend during our discussion.
Yeah.
But you're right. We do hear a lot about public art and, and the, the shape and the manner in which that is applied, I think is, is what we discussed around here today. It was some good information. Uh, but I think you, you, as you can sense, that there is a desire for Columbus to engage in more community art opportunities. Uh, I think the murals we've got on private buildings right now are awesome.
Sure.
I mean, it, it really, you know, it's, it's getting to where people give directions downtown by, well, "Turn left at the wings and, and go down." So it's, uh, it's beginning to really, you know, really have, make an imprint. And I think it also sends a message to folks a lot younger than me that this is a vibrant, colorful, energized community. And, um, we all need to notice that.
Yeah. I, I really have been enjoying how Columbus is a art-based city. And not just through the visual arts, but also through theater, performances, music. Um, and I know I've been working with Artbeat for several years now and I, and that, how that brings so much, uh, people together in one place.
Yep. Well, I've, listen, I have, believe it or not, I've had counselors that have sat in my conference room and advocated for public art on public spaces, just telling what an amazing thing that is and how we really need to get that started. So it's gonna, it's, it's starting to generate a little bit of momentum. All right. Is, uh, what's the, what is the wish of council? Uh, Counselor Huff has made a motion to delay for, for how long? For two weeks or?
Two weeks. Two weeks.
Two weeks. All right. That'll give us enough time to work with the city attorney on that, um, some type of policy. And it'll also give the city manager an opportunity to kind of incorporate some of these into the MOU. Our motion from Counselor Huff, second from the Mayor Protem, any discussion? All those in favor, uh, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I go back to, uh, what I said earlier. I really think it would go a long ways. I know that, uh, I, I don't know if you're asking to bring the MOU back to be approved, but like I said earlier, it would be, I think it would go a long ways for our community to see something, some kind of a development stage of how it would work, whether an example or a, or it doesn't have to be the, uh, the actual, at the end of the day, what's approved. But at least people will understand of what the, in essence, they can see what this vision that's being described in words today. What it could look like.
I'm not directing this. It's council's decision. Two weeks and like a reason.
Do we have a work session coming up?
Not for another, uh, couple of months. We get, we have one a quarter.
Couple of months, we won't be here.
Yeah. So, um, we do have a conceptual plan that we did send to, uh, Piedmont and Ronald McDonald House that we would be happy to share with all the counselors. And this was version two, once we had been to our first council meeting and got a lot of the feedback from the counselors and the community. So, um, we would be happy to share that.
And I just wanna also express that those are just samples. They're not the actual artwork.
Right. Okay. Right, okay. All right, so what is, what is the pleasure of council, of the delay? Is two weeks good enough? Is, all right, there's a motion, second, to delay for two weeks. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no? All right, it is delayed for two weeks. Ladies, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Mayor, so that I'm clear now, in two weeks, this is gonna come back to council with?
If it's delayed for two weeks, my assumption is the MOU will be back on the agenda to be voted on in two weeks. At that time, there are some samples that the ladies indicated they had.
Okay.
That they can bring, and we can show them to the public at the request of council. Uh, we will also, in the meantime, I don't know if it'll be complete, but there should be something from the city attorney's office that at least begins a journey towards a policy that allows council to have a little bit of a, a roadmap on, because we're gonna, and I hope we do, we're gonna see other folks offer up public art on public spaces. So I think it's an opportunity for us to begin work on a comprehensive policy as it relates to public art.
And just to clarify, do we send that, um, concept to you, City Manager, to share with others?
And to others.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we'll, after this meeting, um, we'll reach out and whomever from the councilors wants to meet, um, and, and see if some of these concepts, we can talk through them, but we'll also distribute them, um, to the councilors and to city staff.
Well.
That would be great. Count, have one more comment, Councilor Huff?
So. Yes, I'm the City Manager. Yeah, what, uh, I don't know if you were in the room when I made the suggestion, but we're gonna have, uh, myself and some other council members to join them and meet, so we can kind of guide them a little bit and take a look at things, make sure it comes back to you, back to the city attorney, and kind of guide the timeframe between now and two weeks later for you to have everything you need, and the city attorney to have everything he needs to let us know if we're ready to be back in a room in two weeks.
Okay, so what I, I want you to send.
Yeah, and, uh, Councilor Thomas is saying to me, uh, if you need more than two weeks, they need, we can extend the time.
Well, I, I'm gonna have you deal directly with who you've been dealing with, and that's Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge.
That's right.
Deal directly with her.
Okay.
And she'll, she'll bring it up to us, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good, thank you.
And before you leave, if you don't have my information, you can get it from the clerk of council right here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Mayor, I'm gonna move to number four on my agenda, and, um, I am going to ask Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, Parks and Rec Director Holly Browder, and Civic Center Director Rob Landers to come forward, because the purpose of our being here is to talk about Swootacular, and you mentioned that in your opening, Mayor. Uh, but we're asking for approval to accept both financial and equipment donations from local business and organizations to be used for decoration and lighting, equipment for Swootacular Trunk or Treat and More Event. And, um, Holly Browder and Rob Landers and Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin have been working really hard to make this a huge success. And, uh, I want them to share with you and the community, um, how this is scheduled to work, and then we'll ask you to, um, vote to allow us to accept financial and equipment donations. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to our team.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for letting us come and discuss this event. Oh, sorry.
And speak a little loud to make sure they can.
Uh, can everyone hear me? Can you hear me? Good. Okay. Uh, well, we thank you for letting us come before you guys to talk about this event that myself and Holly and Ms. Goodwin had got together about a month ago to discuss plans for a, a fall event where we can get the community together. Uh, we haven't had the community together in over about six or seven months. And obviously with COVID, that presented a huge challenge for us. Uh, because one of the first things that we had to do on our end as a civic center is we had to cancel the Greater Columbus Fair, which, uh, for us was gut-wrenching, so to speak, uh, because it's a huge event for the community, uh, but we had to do the right thing for the community as far as safety protocols are concerned. So with that being said, uh, the discussion came about was, what's a safe alternative that we could provide for the community, uh, around a fall event where, again, we're trying to mitigate, uh, the transfer of COVID-19, but also provide a, a fun event for the family. And so that's where myself, Ms. Goodwin, and Ms. Holly got together and just started discussing several different activa, activations that we could put together, and we knew that we could put something together safe, uh, where if everyone stayed in their cars, similar to a traditional trunk or treat, uh, we wouldn't have anybody outside of their vehicles congregating, and again, reducing the risk of spreading COVID-19. Uh, so our teams at the Parks and Rec, as well as the Civic Center, uh, being led by Nixon Patterson, has put together a logistical game plan of how we can activate on our site, on our lot, so to speak, socially distanced, where families can come out from, all across from Phoenix Cities to, to, to Columbus, and drive through our lot in a safe manner, uh, where we are able to distribute candy and other goods safely, uh, through the trunks of individual cars and through their windows if they're wearing PPE equipment. If we have that presentation, I'd like to pull it up really quick. So again, this just started probably about a month ago, and within the month, uh, and through several discussions with, uh, other community members and leaders, uh, within the community, we've gathered partnership from, uh, from, from, from Metra, from other departments within the CCG, uh, AmeriGroup, Safe Kids, Georgia Power, M&amp;M Mars. And the more and more we discuss this safe event and this planning, we've had more organizations that simply asked us, how can we help? How can we help? So I didn't want to continue to say, uh, well, we've got a plan in place, because we actually do need help. Uh, we do need volunteers to assist us on putting on this event, where we're gonna probably be expecting, uh, over a thousand attendees, um, between, on October 24th, between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. Uh, we've strategically partnered with Safe Kids, um, and they want to distribute close to 300 helmets for this event, uh, and we have other several partners that will be onsite to activate. Uh, on the next slide, if we go, go to the next slide, I'll pull, have the, uh, map of the logistics for the event. The clicker, sorry. Hey, you guys know I'm getting used to this now. All right, look at, oh, that's fancy. All right, so on this next page, it shows a map of the lot, of, of how my team and Civic Center have put together the logistics, uh, for the event. We're gonna utilize lots A, B, and C for the event, and Lot A will have Safe Kids set up, and that's where they'll do the distribution of measuring for helmets and distributing those for anyone that pre-registers, uh, for the event. They're asking, uh, community members or youth who are looking to get a helmet for, for their bikes to pre-register on, with Safe Kids, but if not, they will have availability onsite, uh, to sign waivers to get you all signed up to distribute helmets. But as individuals come in on 404th, our security team, along with CPD, will help navigate traffic throughout the parking lot on lots A, B, and C. Now, what we're doing is we're activating a similar process that's done at Mercedes-Benz for the turkey giveaway. They have thousands of people that show up on the day when they're passing out turkeys. So what we plan to do is to put everyone in a line almost as if you're going to the grocery store. And so as, as individuals come, it's gonna be first, first, first serve, first come, first served basis, and this allows us to safely, uh, have everyone onto the lot and to prevent a bottleneck onto the main parkway. Now, once the event starts, if you'll note, all of those numbered boxes are organizations who have already reached out to us that want to participate in passing out and distributing candy, uh, throughout our event. So as the arrows, I know there's a lot of arrows going on, but our team will be on the lot to make sure and ensure that everyone is driving through safely at a, at a good rate of speed, uh, going through the different tables and the different vendor quote-unquote booths, where they'll be able to pass out candy directly to individuals in the trunk of their car. We are asking individuals to have their, their trunks open or unlocked, so that these partners can literally safely go up to the event, and just like you've seen on all the contactless commercials, and just distributing the candy into the trunk of their cars. Everybody on the day of the event, whether it's security, whether it's CPD, or volunteers who are participating, will be in PPE equipment, um, so that way, again, we're protecting not only ourselves, but individuals who are coming. As they go through the corral, what we're calling it, we'll have a DJ onsite, our 40-foot screen will be activated, we'll have some spooky scenes rotating on the screen, and some spooky music going throughout the parking lot. But again, this is all designed for the families of, of Columbus and Phoenix City. Uh, and there's not gonna be a scary element to the entire process. Again, it's just something different and unique, where we feel like, uh, we confidently feel like we can get everyone onto our lots through this, uh, corral, so to speak, where individuals will be able to come, dress up, we're asking the community to dress in their costumes, decorate their cars, our staffs will be dressed up, community partners will be dressed up, and as they're just going through the lot, we have, we have another element or activation that we're calling our City Glow by Night. Now, if anybody's ever been to Stone Mountain during their essentially Glow by Night, it's a walk-through, and there's inflatables and lights that are decorated throughout the entire campus. Well, we're gonna activate something similar, but it's just gonna be a drive-through portion. So as you're going through our City Glow by Night, we have partners who have signed up to have scenes, uh, you know, we'll have a pirate scene, we will have a, a quote-unquote witches scene, uh, just something fun and festive for the families to see as they're going through. Uh, we've already started, uh, purchasing, uh, lights to basically light up the parking lot and decorations, so that the lot, the, the lot is, is in a festive manner. But in that process, this is a huge undertaking. If anyone has been to our lots before, lots B and C holds almost 1,600 parking spaces. So we have a lot of space that we need to fill. And again, as we've had these conversations with partners, a lot of them have asked, what can we do to help? And that's why we're coming to city council today, is we want to be able to move forward with a lot of partners who are asking, they, they want to donate financially, they want to donate equipment, they want to donate candy, and of course, obviously, we want to do the right thing and make sure that we have you all's blessing in receiving those donations, uh, because they're gonna go a long way in, in assisting in this unique, one-of-a-kind event to make it memorable, uh, for, for families that come. So from a visual standpoint, I know I've outlined a couple of details, but from a visual standpoint, this is essentially what we're trying to incorporate. Uh, we'll have a couple of food trucks onsite, but they will be activated like drive-through. Um, if you see the middle, uh, the middle pictures and the top pictures at the top, that's kind of how we're gonna try to have the lot illuminated and with pumpkins and with hay stacked out all throughout the entire lot. And again, that bottom right-hand corner is a picture from, uh, Stone Mountain's Glow by Night, and we're trying to, again, activate something similar, but in a drive-through manner. At no point during this entire process will anybody have to get out of their cars. Again, everyone will be in, uh, PPE equipment, and we also will have security, again, onsite to kind of enforce those guidelines and those restrictions. So a couple of facts and questions, um, want to get straight to the point. So how is this socially distanced? Again, um, everybody that will be working that day, they will be temperature-checked coming in, Piedmont Hospital will be here, um, to help us support with additional PPE equipment for anyone that doesn't have any onsite. Uh, that's one of the partners who is asked to help, uh, as, as a gift and kind, uh, and all of our staff will be in the proper attire and socially distanced. Uh, we're asking that vehicle trunks, when they arrive, to be unlocked, uh, to basically receive candy, and, uh, the, the biggest piece is, no one will have to get out of their vehicles during this process. Again, so us trying to reduce the, uh, the contact, uh, to prevent, um, the spreading of COVID-19. Are all cars, cars permitted? Uh, no, we can't have limos and oversized vehicles coming through. We want to try to make this as safe as possible without any tailgating. Um, would there be jump scares? Absolutely not. Again, this is designed for all families of all ages, it will be spooky, we do want to be, have it to be festive, but we also want everyone to walk away having good memories, so to speak, so. And we are planning for rain or shine. In the event that we have severe weather, we'll make sure that we get those notifications out in the event, in the chance that the event has to be canceled. But those are preliminary, uh, uh, that's just a brief presentation, but I can tell you that between Parks and Rec and the Civic Center, we've dedicated dozens of hours to this event already, uh, with the aim of, uh, we want to be able to make it a little bit bigger than what we have originally planned for, and we can do that with the community's help, and they have volunteered, um, to say, hey, we want to be of assistance, and how, and how can we help? So we're coming to city council today, um, to be able to receive those donations, both financially, gift and kind, and equipment for, for this event.
All right, thank you. Councilor Huff?
Yes, great presentation. Uh, I'm over here. Uh, if you would, let, let me know in the public note, what can we do to help? After you accept what you accept today, how do we get, do we contact you through email if we have other people that would like to sponsor, donate, or like to be part of the event that, on that particular day?
Right, yes, you can contact myself or Holly direct, directly, and we are trying to set up a line item, uh, through the Civic Center to be able to process any donations, and they will be specifically tagged for this event. So even post the event, we'll be able to show what all financial and what all the equipment costs that we've received from a donation standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to add, last, last note, Holly made sure, we're gonna need volunteers. Um, the lot is a, it's a big lot. Uh, we plan on decorating as many trees in our lot as possible, putting up inflatables, and so from October 21st through October, the day of the event, October 24th, we are looking for volunteers. And so, uh, any CCG employees, we're asking for your participation, but the community at large, if you would like to volunteer to help us to set up the lot, we will be doing that. We will start on October 21st, all the way up and through the event, and you can contact myself or Holly directly, and we have information to give you, a facts and questions for volunteers. We actually have shifts aside for volunteers, uh, whether you can come out in the morning or come out in the evening, and we have a, uh, our operations manager, Brian Giffen, has been leading, uh, the charge on the logistics, the planning, and also, he'll be working with the volunteers on the day of the, on any day that they can volunteer their work.
Thank you. Councilor, Councilor Thomas?
One suggestion that I would have for you is that you, you contact the Chattahoochee Council, the Boy Scouts of America. I know in this time, when, um, they've not been able to do some of the kinds of things they typically do because of COVID, they are looking for projects that they can do, and they, they have some great volunteers. Uh, some of these scouts, particularly the, you know, the, the older scouts can do what you, um, what you were talking about to help set up and help on that day. So Juan Osorio is the scout executive, Chattahoochee Council, the Boy Scouts of America. They'll be able to give you some volunteers.
Yes, ma'am, that'd be great to have some Eagle Scouts out helping.
Thank you. Councilor House?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I'd say whenever you're ready, if you can send out the words you would want us to put on Facebook and other things like that, to, to tell people who to call or whatever for volunteers, for candy, for whatever other kind of stuff you want, if you just let us know what you want us to say, we could at least put it out in our social media networks and try to help get the word out.
Certainly, we can, uh, share those flyers we've already had made, and we've actually already advertised them on the Civic Center and Parks Rec, Parks and Recreation's Facebook pages, um, because, to answer Councilor Huff's question from a moment ago, yes, we are looking for candy. Um, thank you to some of the councilors who've already actually donated that, we appreciate that, but we're also, in addition to that, we're looking for any organization, perhaps they don't want to come out or aren't able to come out and participate with us, and that's okay, um, but candy is extremely important for us. Um, and so as much of that, as we can get in advance, it can either be, uh, delivered here, uh, to the Civic Center, or it can be delivered to Parks and Rec at Comer Gym. Uh, we'll take it at either location and store it until the day of the event, but those are certainly things that we need in addition to volunteers. But yes, or Councilor House, we can provide that information to you all.
Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. Um, the Columbus Board of Realtors has already reached out to me, and they've, um, told me that they want to participate, and so they, um, I'll get you, um, their telephone number, because they'll actually have boots on the ground for you.
Thank you, that would be great.
Thanks.
Mayor and Council, I really want to thank Rob Landers and Holly Browder and their teams for pulling all of this together, that Columbus, Georgia can have a safe, uh, family fun event. So thank you for your work. Uh, with that, uh, number four on our agenda is approval to accept both financial and equipment donations, uh, from local business and organizations to be used for this event.
We moved, Councilor Davis made a motion to approve, uh, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, that's approved.
And, uh, we got a 2020 Brownfield Assessment Grant.
Mr. City Manager, if I, if I can, if you'd indulge me. Mr. City Manager, if I can, if you'd indulge me, one of the busiest departments this time of year is our Elections Division, and I know that our Director of Elections has been out here to simply have us approve accepting a couple of grants. Can we bring her up?
Yes, sir. If she will come on up and follow in the Brownfield Assessment Grant of $300,000, we will hear from our Elections Office. Mayor, $300,000 grant, Brownfield.
Motion approved from Counselor Huff, second from Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor, any discussion, I'm sorry, on the Brownfield Grant? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. That's approved.
And so, Ms. Boren, I actually texted you earlier, and I was going to get you up.
My phone's dead. I'm sorry.
She didn't respond to my text message, Miss Mayor. But anyway, she's done a great job and is doing a great job with the election. There's a lot going on, and she knows how to go and look for money, too. But we've got two grants. One's Elections and Registration Grant for Upcoming Election. It's an award from the Center for Tech and Civic Life and for personnel and equipment to help the elections and registration respond to needs arising as a result of COVID in the upcoming election. There's no local match. We like those kinds of grants, and we're requesting your approval.
Counselor Thomas made a motion to approve, and Counselor Huff seconded. So any discussion? Any, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no.
And then she called me late Friday night, says, I got a grant, you know, and, you know, we need to get it accepted, and I'm like, how much is it? And she said, it's $210,675. I told her, I think we can get that on the agenda, you know, with no local match. So there she goes again. She applied for it and didn't think she was going to get it, she told me. I just applied for it. And, but we're asking you to accept an award from the USC Schwarzenegger Institute Democracy Fund Initiative.
We had a motion from Counselor House, and a second? Second from Counselor Huff. To the, Counselor Huff, is this to the motion? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Approved. Counselor Huff?
If, City Manager, you finished?
Well, I was just going to say, this grant is to supplement early voting sites and in-person voting at polling places to help the elections and registration respond to needs arising as a result of COVID. Job well done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just wanted to congratulate you for you, your staff, your board, everyone. I don't know what got you to thinking so far out of the box. I know we've had a brief conversation, but there's been a lot of conversations since yesterday. I had friends that stood in line for, I guess, four or five hours yesterday. But the moving forward with the number of locations that will be available was just a real outside-of-the-box thought process because it kind of hits everyone in the community as far as where they're located. So no one really has a gripe about not having the opportunity to get to the polls. And it was brought to my attention last night, another congratulatory remark to you, that we ended up on ABC News last night, evening news, and saw the lines all around the Citizen Service Building coming in yesterday. So great job. I know you don't hear it enough, and you'll get fussed at a lot between now and November 3rd, I'm sure, by some constituents and things, but thank you for what you're doing. And one last point was, someone wanted me to ask you whose idea it was for the snacks and the water yesterday, so that went over real big.
So there were a lot of local organizations who came out, set up tents, provided water, provided pizza. They were out there most of the day for the voters who were standing in line. They brought chairs for voters to sit in, the disabled voters, and we are continuing to use those chairs today. We had a line at 4:30 this morning. The line continued until 6:00 a.m., and people were ready, ready to vote when we opened at 7:00 a.m.
Sounds good. My son is supposed to be home Friday, and we should be in together. See you then.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
And I'm going to repeat a comment I had made to Ms. Boren the other night on the phone, and she will take issue with it. But you know, these grants, there are election boards all across the country applying to these grants, and it's not as easy as she made it look. And it's my opinion that because of the reputation she has established, not just in Columbus or even just in Georgia, but regionally and nationally, when it comes to being an expert on facilitating safe and secure elections, that money was much easier to appropriate to a department run by somebody like that. So I don't want you to think that it's just simply a matter of sending in a request for this funding, but to get over $600,000 in just a little over a week and a half is more than just impressive, so. Counselor Davis?
Ms. City Manager, I know the Director of Elections has, over the years, come to us and has had many needs, and we've always gone to the, I guess, to the backyard, rent, loan a vehicle lot, and tried to answer those requests. Does this mean now that we can get some of those things taken care of without having to do that anymore?
Well, actually, she got a new van.
I got a super nice van from the IT department, yes.
It was, and she got it with, once she made her request known, she had it within five days. So she turned out, it turned out really good for her.
It did.
Good stuff.
I will say that Governor Schwarzenegger is calling in. He's probably called in at 1:00 to our poll worker training today. We're really excited about that, to try to motivate and commend the poll workers for their service, so.
That's awesome. Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Boren, I also saw the, on the news, the lines and so forth. Would you just give us some of the statistics of how many people have already voted, how many absentee ballots you sent out, how many you've gotten back, some of those kinds of things as we have started just in the very beginning of the early vote?
And please excuse my voice, I did a lot of talking yesterday. So we have 130,000 registered voters here in Muskogee County. We have mailed 31,000 absentee ballots as of yesterday. We voted 1,338 people yesterday. A lot of the people who came in to vote wanted to turn in their absentee ballot because they actually wanted to vote in person. There was the feeling that, let me go ahead and request my ballot, I have it in my hand, I can choose to vote it, or I can choose to vote in person. So a lot of people canceled their absentee ballots and were able to vote in person. We will continue voting from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. every day at the City Services Center, and we will open up four additional sites that last week of early voting. We will be at the Shirley B. Winston Recreation Center beginning October 25th through the 30th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We will be at the Civic Center Ice Rink from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., again, the 25th through the 30th. The new Help Department building, and the city has worked with us so great to get that Help Department building ready for us to use, will be there also the 25th through the 30th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and then also at the Trade Center from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., the 25th through the 30th. Because of the great turnout that we saw yesterday, we may be working with the Trade Center to expand those days of early voting, but that has not been confirmed yet.
You said you had 1,000 yesterday?
Yes.
What do you, what would you typically have?
Typically, on the first day of early voting, we would not have a turnout like that, but considering it was a Columbus Day and holiday for a lot of people, they decided to come out and vote while they were off work. A typical first-day early voting workout, or workout, turnout for elections would be 600 to 700 people, so we doubled our normal turnout.
Thanks.
Counselor Crabbe?
I guess I wasn't aware of the snacks and the water that was being donated yesterday, but I was wondering if we couldn't have food trucks come and park near some of these facilities to accommodate people that are in the long lines.
I think our concern with that would be the ingress and egress for the lines and people standing in lines. I believe the police department has moved their fallen officer celebration from the City Services Center building back to the Public Safety Building today because of the lines and how long the lines are. That would certainly be something that could be looked at.
Okay.
Counselor Garrett? Hang on, here we go.
Just a real quick comment. Would it be legal for us to get our census workers out there? Because we have a, you know, record in-person turnout, these people are waiting in line, takes five, 10 minutes, fill out the census, we've got really low census turnout.
We had hoped to partner with census, but with the deadlines and the beginning of early voting, not until October 12th, the deadlines didn't fit with each other, but now with the new deadline, we are considering partnering with the census to get those questionnaires filled out.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's a great idea.
It is.
Counselor Tucker?
Thank you, Ms. Nancy. I know you probably saw my post yesterday, I was so excited about the voter turnout. I wanted to say about the line warmers, it was the Protege Project, Tanisha Louse and Brandy Pennick, and then it was also Laura Walker and some other individuals that were out there donating water, but the Protege Project, I think that's the name of them, Tanisha Louse, they were the ones that got the pizza. So you could see them walking through the line and giving out water and different snacks, so just want to truly thank the citizens that came together, and they're still donating. Right now, I think they've raised like $500 from just citizens to ensure that, you know, individuals have not only water, but chairs as well.
There were also a couple of churches that were handing out water to the voters as they were standing in line, and our deputy, who was not able to move his station, leave his station the entire day, they actually brought him pizza and some water also.
Very good.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, you know, in fact, I, so that Nancy, no, I shouldn't say this, but I told Deputy City Manager Goodwin to give Nancy Boren whatever she wants to get through this election, so that's what I've, those are the directions that I've given.
Thank you.
Have you been getting what you need?
Yes, I have, and he really didn't say what I said to him Friday night. I told him I needed to ask for forgiveness before I asked for permission, and there was a little bit of hesitation in his voice. He was like, oh, okay. So, anyway.
Very good, great, great job, Nancy.
Thank you.
And good luck during the next couple of weeks. It's going to be like riding a roller coaster with no straps to stay in.
Yes, it will.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Number six is a 2020, 2021 Victim of Crime Act Continuation Grant. It's $417,247 with $104,312 from the 5% crime victim surcharge fund, asking your approval.
Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem, or second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. Approved.
I have a 2020, 2021 Victims of Crime Act Compensation Grant. It's $50,049. There's no match, cash or in-camp required.
Motion from Counselor Thomas, second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. It's approved.
Okay, number 11, we have delayed, and we will bring that back. That's the Grants Management Policy Update. And then 12, I didn't do. Yes, I'm sorry. Number 10 is a Crime Victims Assistance Grant. It's $203,419 and $5,287 from the 5%.
Motion approved from Counselor Thomas, and second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. It's approved.
And then I've got the Transportation Improvement, Improvements for the Proposed Redevelopment of Woodland Hills, and of course, we've discussed that with you and about the traffic impact study. That's been a concern of ours, so it's requested that Harris County Commission, we're requesting to, that the potential traffic impacts is documented in the Traffic Impact Study prepared by Southeastern Engineering, Inc., dated September 25, 2020, for the proposed redevelopment of Woodland Hills in Harris County to be addressed and corrected before the issuance of any permits. And the resolution also calls for the further coordination of development efforts for this project between our two governments, and we're just asking your approval on this request.
Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem, is there a second? Second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Passes.
So I've got quite a few purchases. The first one, A is COVID-19 Facility Decontamination Services for Metra. It's a three-year agreement, the total is $73,718.40. We're asking your approval.
Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem, and second from Counselor House. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Passes.
And I think Counselor Crabbe may be appreciative of this one, this payment for Canberra Avenue Guard Rails.
Counselor Thomas, was this to the previous?
No.
Okay. There's a motion to approve from Counselor House, and a second? Oh, Counselor Crabbe made that motion, and seconded by Counselor House. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. All right?
Now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Thomas?
I would like to move approval of Item E, the annual contract, F, an annual contract, J, the annual contract. Those are just regular things to do, so that's, those annual contracts out of.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve E, F, and J. All right, and a second from Counselor Tucker. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed, say no. It's approved.
Okay, Mayor, and I will highlight those when I get to them, but I've got payment for Hefelhorn Way. It's a cul-de-sac. It's $85,919.89. Property was donated to the city in order to build a cul-de-sac on Hefelhorn Way for safety of vehicles on the road by not having to pull in and back out of driveways. We're asking your approval.
There's a motion approved from Counselor Thomas, and I heard Counselor House over here with a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. It's approved.
I've got zero-turn mowers. These are replacement units, 11 mowers, and the total purchase price is $85,021.64. Asking your approval. Zero-turn mowers.
We have a question from Mayor Pro Tem.
I would like to move approval of all the items we have not yet voted on of the purchases, unless someone has a question on any item.
There was a second from Counselor Tucker for all as-yet-to-be-approved items. Is there any that anybody would like pulled for more discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Mr. City Manager, would you run through them very quickly, though, please?
Yes, sir. So D was turn-rated as mowers. E is Pest Control Services, as Counselor Thomas indicated, annual contract. F, Traffic Signal Equipment. And G, Mott's Green Plaza that we briefed you on at the last meeting. H, Dallaret Buses for Metra, and there's five of those, the Dallaret Buses. And then I, 29-foot. five of those, the Dalarite Buses. And then I, 29-foot low-floor diesel buses for Metra. There's four of those. Landscape Materia, J. K is the Gensfer Software Support Agreement for Metra. L, electrostatic decontamination sprayers for fire EMS. M, washer extractors and dryers for fire EMS. N, Fire Apparatus Maintenance Repair Services for fire EMS and Public Works. O, repair of a counterpillar, bulldozer. P, used buses for Public Works. And Q, upgrade of financial payroll budget human resources system. Those are all of the purchases. On the updates on my agenda, we've already dealt with A, B, and C, poverty reduction. We're rescheduling that. And so we are going to continue with E, F, G, and H. And that will be Tax Allocation District Midland, Notice of Riverwalk Closure, which will be very brief, Health Department Update, which will be very brief, and then the Finance Update. And so with that, we're going to have Tax Allocation District Midland Commons.
Good afternoon. We're going to be hopefully somewhat brief here. But we need to let you know that at the next council meeting, we will be bringing forth a recommendation on allocation of funds for the TAD and Midland Commons, just to get you and give you an idea, give you a heads up about what that's going to entail and how we want to go about it. We will be bringing that at time, the report from the committee with their recommendation and giving that to you and hopefully going forward for that to kind of help with this whole process of the day. We want the developers, the ones, the applicants themselves, really to come and give you an overview about what they're trying to achieve with these TAD funds and why they need them. So Marty Flannoy and Chris Whitman, y'all coming in and speak?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, City Council. Try to make this brief. I know everybody's getting hungry. We, I've reached out to most all of y'all individually and the, I think with the only exception with Counselor Thomas, I think she was out of pocket for the two-week period in which I was meeting with most of y'all. So be brief. Again, this is, this is for the actual budget for the Tax Allocation District in Midland, which y'all have already voted, voted on the geographic area of the, of the TAD. And we're requesting, right now, the total request is $11.6 million. $8.6 million of the funds is going to pay, to re, or pay for and/or reimburse the developers for projects that have been done or are being completed out there at the Midland Commons development. The other $3 million is set aside for the city to use. Approximately $1.5 million is being set aside to build Jenkins Hall, a learning center, and a Parks and Recreation Hall that they would use to have summer camps out there at Flat Rock Park. And the other million and a half dollars would be set aside for the Planning and Transportation Department to use to make improvements to JR Allen Parkway on the other side of the bridge of Manchester Expressway that goes over Manchester, Manchester Expressway in front of Kitten Lake. I can go down and, Ms. Counselor Thomas, I actually have a book here for you that would have all of the stuff in there that I'll be leaving for you and would answer any questions that you may have. Couple of the points that I would like to make is through this COVID area, this crisis that we've had, we've kept everybody employed out at Midland Commons. Everybody has continued to work. And we have generated approximately $1.3 million in sales tax back to the city. And we've done that without one penny of federal money aid to help support that development. And we were, we were pretty proud of that. The $11.6 million would get broken down. Approximately $3 million is set aside, was, was used for the off-site improvements. And approximately, that would be all of the improvements that were done out on JR Allen Parkway. And all of the onsite improvements on JR Allen Parkway was, off, excuse me, on our site was approximately $4 million. We had approximately $250,000 worth of wetlands mitigation. Civil engineering was about $265,000. Concrete removal of the 500,000 square-foot pad and the asphalt that surrounded it was $750,000. And then, of course, to round it out, I told you the Banquet Hall of Science Lab at Flat Rock Park, there's a $3 million budget for that. So I'll wrap my summary up with that. Unless y'all have got any questions, I can address those at this time. Jeff Kosky from the Bleakley Group is also here if y'all had any questions about how the financing of this project was going to be completed. But then that, I'll turn it over to y'all.
I don't see any questions right now. The City Manager, do we want to talk about the financing or?
Mayor, I'm going to, I can hear from Rick Jones, but, I mean, I've listened to what they've indicated they spent and, of course, what the request is. You want to make any comments? Of course, I am not prepared to make any recommendation to you today. It's good to receive the information. And we'll obviously have to take a close look at what was spent and the request. And then we will come back to you with further discussion.
I really, excuse me, Mr. City Manager, I really think that sums up everything from the committee for the most part in terms of what we heard in dealing with that. We informed the applicants about what's actually in the account right now in terms of funds that may be set aside for and the delay that may be coming from that in terms of, we wait to wait to a chicken or egg approach in terms of things have to be developed for them to generate the tax and so forth. We can actually put in the money in the account and whatnot. So they realize that. And the committee has a recommendation that we'll also share with you as well in terms of how they want, how they see things going. But typically, we've addressed everything. We think we talked about with financing with them. We both have an understanding, I think, what we're trying to achieve here through this application.
So Mayor Pro Tem, we will, again, we'll, we'll follow up with further discussion at a future meeting.
So you're not asking for any action from council today?
I am not. No, sir.
Okay. All right. Mr. Whitman, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate Mr. Bleakley's, Bleakley Group representative being here today. But sorry, he traveled all this way and we didn't have a question for him. But welcome to Columbus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
With that, Mayor Pro Tem, Deputy City Manager Hodge will update you on the Riverwalk closure, a portion of the Riverwalk closure.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So this is just an update for you on the Georgia Power High Voltage Structure Replacement and the Riverwalk Closure and the section that will be closed for a period of time. This is the location of the assets that will be replaced. There are actually 11 existing structures that you see here highlighted with the red circle, as well as on the very bottom of the screen, there's structures on the island as well on the Alabama side. So there's 11 structures. Seven of those are on the city of Columbus side by the Riverwalk. They will be replaced with six structures. Only two of them will be on the Riverwalk side. So the other four will be on the Alabama side. So we're really concentrating on the two structures that will be replaced on the city, city of Columbus side of the river. This will be the location in those two structures. So all the other structures will be eliminated and replaced with these two structures. The Riverwalk will be closed in phases. Phase one will be, has already started. That's October 5th through the end of November. And they'll be closing the Riverwalk from the 23rd Street Pavilion all the way north to the North Highland Dam Hydro Plant. This is the phase one just north of the 23rd Street Pavilion will be closed, leading all the way up to the Pavilion by the North Highland Dam. They've also provided for an alternate put-in site for Whitewater. So that has been relocated and coordinated with Whitewater for that alternate site. The second phase, which will begin at the end of November, and that will close the Riverwalk all the way from the North Highland Dam all the way down to the First Avenue Substation. And that will eliminate those access points in that whole stretch through the end of March. This is just the end of that at the First Avenue Substation. So that's just a quick update. We've put out a detour plan. We've advertised that. They have the signage that's been put out by Columbus Barrcades to give the citizens the alternate routes. So we'll be working with Georgia Power moving forward on this project for them.
Has that been, has that been included in council's packet, that presentation?
I don't think so, but I believe we've emailed
Okay.
the council members what's going on.
I just, I didn't remember seeing it. And I was going to try to make sure I got a copy.
And we will resend it again. I'll have
Because there are going to be a lot of questions about that from all over the community.
And of course, we've done the news release and and Tia Shya Johnson is going to resend it to you.
Okay.
And it's a, it's a critical project, Mayor. It's a, it's a project where they are being proactive to make sure that all citizens and users of the Riverwalk remain safe.
No, I thought that was a great presentation. We've notified everybody. We've done everything we can. But it gives us a little bit of, just a brief, you know, talking points because it's going to come up because of such a long closure period.
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
We, we have gotten a, the press release that you guys put out.
Yes.
Right.
Councilors have gotten that. So, and have shared that on social media. So
Right.
We'll do it again.
Yeah, we'll, we'll resend it though, Mayor.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions on that, we will move on to the Health Department update.
Appears to me none.
So we just wanted to give you just an update on the Health Department. They have been in their new facility since the end, the beginning of July. And just to provide you just a quick update, again, this is the facility and the improvements that were made to the old Virginia College Building at 5601 Veterans Parkway. They are located in the lower level of that facility. So all the offices from WIC, the District Child Health, the pharmacy has relocated there from Piedmont. So all of the clinical operations have moved to the new location. The upper level, we have had a request and will be bringing back an additional lease agreement from the WIC office. They will be utilizing the space highlighted in blue. They've been using the pink area just for the last couple of months to provide a drive-through for WIC services. They want to continue that operation. And so we'll be bringing back a formal lease agreement for the blue area to allow them to continue during this pandemic environment to have the drive-through service. The area that's highlighted in yellow, and I know the Elections Director had to leave, they have been utilizing and will utilize this space. It's highlighted in yellow for their equipment. We were looking for space for them. As you saw over at the Citizen Service Center, we had a lot of election equipment and we'll be utilizing this space for that equipment. They will also be utilizing the space highlighted in green for early voting. So we'll move the WIC drive-through office during that week of early voting so that there's no confusion and to provide easy access for early voting during that week that Director Boeran had outlined. Just to give you an update, the purchase price, as you know, was just $2.5 million. We had closing costs, building renovations, improvements to the parking lot came in at $7,775,000. The annual debt service payment on the bonds that were issued for that purchase is $310,000 a year for 20 years. Our annual operating expenses were projecting and have budgeted $225,000. The annual rent that we're receiving from the lower level is $278,000. That gives us a net annual expense of about $256,000. We avoided a rental payment at the old facility that would have been about $475,000. So this has been a good investment for the community and for our citizens. At this time, I'll call up
Well, I, and still you have someone else who wants to, who are considering rent.
That's correct. We're going to have additional rent coming in on that facility for that area for the WIC drive-through. And that will be coming back to council at the next meeting. I do have one more slide. If you can pull that presentation back up, I'll have Metro Director come up and just talk about the shuttle service.
So while she's coming, if there are any questions, we will answer those. But you can see that this really turned out to be a good investment.
Mayor.
Just all the way around.
Thank you, Mayor. Isaiah, I just wanted to say, congratulations on getting them in by July. That was remarkable achievement. And working, dealing with COVID and all the things we had to put up with, I just wanted to say congratulations.
Our team did an awesome job. Ryan Pruitt, you know that guy. And he led the charge, Mayor Pro Tem and Deputy City Manager there. Ryan Pruitt got it done.
But you know, the whole, the whole endeavor was very, very scrutinized. And it was a lot of people, a lot of naysayers thinking that we were making a bad move. And I think looking at the return that we got in, knowing that we're going to be setting some of that aside for operational and maintenance issues that may materialize in the future, and the fact that we hit deadlines and we hit budget, great job to everybody involved.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Davis? Mr. City Manager, of course, I don't have to tell you, but when you got cash flow over there, I mean, it really equates to reducing our, our budget. And that's just a good thing. That's what we said we could do. And we've been able to do it. So kudos to you and your staff for, for working out well. But I guess what she just showed us, we still have, once the elections are over and people move on, there's still available space. Is that, is that correct?
Well, we, we had a small space on the level when you, if you turn into the Health Department and you immediately turn left, you know, that's the upstairs portion. And that front portion is, is what's
10,000 square feet is the top.
Yeah. And the, and the top portion is 10,000 square feet. And we're going to have the benefit of, we worked with Nancy Boer. And we may not have told you all of this yet. But you know, you went, did the walkthrough and you saw that equipment stored. And she needs climate control. So we are going to spend 40,000 or 50,000 to air condition that 10,000 square feet that was not. And that's what we're going to be using. But yes, Counselor Davis, we had someone else come forward for the available, other available space other than that. Is there, go ahead. You help me.
The other available space will be utilized by the WIC offices of the Health Department. They will be using some of that space. And we'll look to use some of the other space in the future.
But we are collecting additional rent that we were not including
That's correct.
as a result of that, Counselor. -as a result of that, Councilor Davis, to your Okay?
No, that's just a great thing, and it's exceeding far than what I expected, but that's a really good thing. I think the council did a good job with that.
Yes.
So if you can pull the slide up, we just have one final slide about the shuttle service.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. City Manager. In terms of the transportation to the, both locations at 2100 Comer Avenue and the new location at 5601 Veterans Parkway, since July 1st, from July 1st through October 2nd, we transported 26 customers. As you can see there on the slide, one, and these trips originate from the transfer center. So we had one customer go into Comer Avenue and the other 25 to the new location at Veterans Parkway. And you may know that we purchased a van, wheelchair, lift-equipped van, and so people with, persons with disabilities or anyone wanting to go to either location will call us and schedule their trip, and we'll take them. But the number is as low as we expected because we do have two fixed routes that service both locations. Actually, the Comer Avenue, we have about three routes. But the new location routes nine and 10. So we do know that people are using the fixed route service as well as their personal transportation.
And you all may recall that Isaiah Hughley said that transportation is not an issue. But we went through, but I knew that transportation would not be an issue. And so since July 1st, we're into four months, and we've transported less-
Total of 26, but 25 to the new location.
Yes. And since July 1st. So, you know, we are there and we will remain available to provide transportation, but it's going just as I thought it would go.
Councilor Crabb?
So you say that you'll continue to provide this transportation. Do you think there'll become a point in time where it won't be necessary?
Well, but that'll take care of itself because it's demand response. In other words, you, we are there and we will only send, is that right?
That's correct.
The transportation if there's a request. And so if there are no requests, it won't be, I mean, we won't be doing anything. And so I think eventually it'll fade out, I do. But we'll be there if they need us.
And we, in closing, I'll make this comment in talking with the Health Department officials, staff in the beginning, they informed us that most of their clients are walk-ins. So many of them do not have appointments. So a lot of times, people won't schedule a ride with Metro because they don't know themselves a lot of times if they're going to go. So we think that's part of it as well. Thank you.
All right. And my final presentation today is a monthly update, and our Finance Director is going to come. And as she is coming, Mayor, she's going to give, she's going to do the monthly finance update. She is going to do the September revenue collections update, and then she's going to do the COVID update, all as part of the finance update. But I will say without, I'll let her share the details of it, but there is in the September revenue report that she is going to give you a September surprise. I'll just refer to it as that. And it's not a bad surprise. It's a September surprise. It's a good surprise. And so when she gets to that point, just hold on to your seat. You know? With that, our Finance Director.
Yes, sir. And I believe Deputy Clerk Lindsey Glisten is passing out the snapshot. But as the City Manager mentioned, there is, you know, some good news in the finance report this month. And this report is as of September 2020, and we're comparing, obviously, to September So as she makes her way around, one thing that I'd like to really sort of point out in terms of some of the funds, some of the operating funds that are listed on the snapshot, a lot of our operating funds, or quite a bit, are tax-supported. And I just want to remind everyone listening, including the council, that this year is a year where we have a bit of a difference in terms of our tax collections. Typically, the first installment for our property taxes are due October 1st. And so with the FY '21 budget, the first installment due date was changed. This was made after requests made by, the request made by the Tax Commissioner. It was changed to be due October 15th as the first installment date. The second installment is still due December 1st. So just starting to the right there of the snapshot, starting with the general fund, the general fund is up 6.76%. And that is good news, right? As the City Manager mentioned, the increase for the general fund is vastly due to an audit that was conducted by the Department of Revenue. And what they told us from the audit from ACCG and GMA was that the state conducted an audit of a large parent company which has businesses located throughout the state likely impacting all or nearly all counties. It took the state eight months to perform the audit, and the audit period covered 2015 through 2018. And so for the years, for those particular years, this parent company utilized software that collected the correct amount of taxes. So for Muskogee County, they would have collected the 8% in sales taxes for that time period. However, instead of coding that 4% to us be the OLOS, the E SLOST and so forth, and the T SLOST, they gave the entire 8% to the state. So when this was discovered by the state, obviously, at the highest level of state government, the decision was made-
So I want to interrupt because I know citizens are watching. So for 2015 through 18, this large company collected money and coded it, and all of the money went to the state instead of cities and counties across the state. And so the state had all this money. And then they discovered that through an audit, that the state had all this money that should have gone to cities and counties. And so they figured, we're going to do the right thing, and we're going to give them the money that they were due for 2015 through 18 from this parent company that coded it, and it went to the state.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that total allocation that was redistributed to the city and cities and counties was a total of $247 million. And again, this came at the highest level of state government as far as the decision to pay what was rightfully owed to the local governments in a lump sum. So there will be no subsequent payments. And so the amount that we received in terms of funding from this audit in our general fund was an additional $3.3 million. We also received an additional $3.3 million in our OLOS. So as you can see moving down the snapshot, the OLOS is up 52.11%.
Slow down so we can comprehend this. So, so, so the local option sales tax collection for September, that's just a local option sales tax. We ended up where we would normally receive $3 million, a little over $3 million, just for that one tax. We received $6.4 million just for that.
Yes, sir.
And then, I don't know if you said it yet, but then the other local option sales tax, we would normally receive somewhere around $3.3 million. So for the other local option sales tax, we also received $6.4 million.
That's correct.
So you're telling me for the month of September that we had, we received 12, almost $13 million-
Yes, sir, in sales tax.
-from the state in one month.
That's correct.
Where we would typically receive for both sales taxes about $6 million.
Yes, sir.
We received around $13 million-
Yes, sir.
-for September.
That's correct.
And so that's what I refer to as a September surprise. And I'm saying this for those watching because I want to make sure they know that we didn't do something, we didn't do anything wrong. This money just came out of nowhere, and we have it. Okay?
Yes, sir. It's raining money in Columbus. So as the City Manager mentioned, again, an additional $3.3 million in the other local option sales tax fund, so it is also up 52.11%. The Stormwater Fund is down 33.-
Well, and then you mentioned the TIA collections, right?
I had not.
Did we get something for that too?
We did. Typically, we receive about $250,000 roughly in TIA funding, and we received over $400,000 in TIA discretionary.
Okay.
Yes. So the Stormwater Fund is down 33.42%. Again, this is one of those funds that's primarily supported by property tax revenues. Paving Fund is down 13.65%. It is also supported by property taxes. The Medical Center Fund, down 37.08%. It is funded by property taxes. The Integrated Waste Fund is down 3.74%. This is partially due to the billing method change that council adopted as part of the FY '21 budget process for commercial solid waste fees. Now, instead of the commercial customers paying all of their fees upfront on an annual basis, they're actually paying it monthly on their water bills. So we did anticipate small decline in those revenues, but in addition to that, recycling and landfill fees are slightly down as well. The Emergency Telephone Fund is actually up 4.40%, and this has actually been on an upward trend for the past two years. My hope is, you know, eventually we'll be able to not rely on a subsidy for this particular fund from the other local option sales tax fund. And over the past three years, actually, the amount that we are subsidizing, that we place in the budget, I should say, to subsidize this fund has actually gone down quite significantly. Whereas in FY '18, we were, we had a subsidy of about $1.1 million. As of FY '21, that subsidy is down to about $600,000. The Economic Development Authority Fund is down 37.08%. The Debt Service Fund is down 79.06%. Those two funds are obviously tax-supported funds. And for the Debt Service Fund, there was a discontinuation of the Build America Bond subsidy that we typically received or that we had been receiving. That subsidy went away when we refinanced all of the bonds last year in 2019 to achieve those substantial savings, over $13 million in savings over the life of the bond. So that subsidy, however, did go away, but it was also calculated as part of the savings. So we knew that that was going to impact this fund, this particular year. The Transportation Fund is down 30.66%. And again, supported by property tax revenues, so it is impacted by the delay in collections. Passenger revenue is slightly down for that fund as well. I would imagine it's also related to COVID. The Trade Center Fund is down 30.43%, and obviously, COVID-19 has impacted the facility's ability to generate event-based revenue. And also, they receive hotel motel taxes. Hotel motel tax collections are down right now about 42% from the prior year, but this is actually in line with our projections for the first half of FY '21. We anticipated a 50% decline in hotel motel taxes for the first part of FY '21. And hopefully, we will come to see a 63% rebound beginning in January, as was predicted very early on by industry experts. The Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is up 33.87%. Oxbow Creek Golf Course Fund is up 62.12%. So obviously, golf is, it's great to be in the business of golf during this pandemic. The Civic Center Fund is down 75.91% and obviously impacted by COVID in terms of generating any event-based revenues. It also receives hotel motel taxes, so it's impacted by that as well. And although revenues are down 75% over last year, the expenses are down 41% when compared to last year as well. Just moving down the snapshot to the other local option sales tax-
Ms. Alexander, before you move out, you mentioned, you know, you touched on the Economic Development Authority Fund, and I know that's Millet. Is that a timing issue? It's down 37%?
It is. It is for all of the tax-supported funds.
Okay.
Typically, we would, you know, if the taxes were due the 1st of October, you know, people typically, you know, pay those taxes either on or before that date, and the Tax Commissioner will usually advance us the money that they may have received during the month of September. And although we have received some advance, it wasn't as much as we received last year. So. Revenues for the Public Safety OLOS, year-to-date, we've collected $6.9 million. This represents only two months of collections. Expenditures to date is just over $6 million. For the infrastructure of the local option sales tax, we've recorded $2.9 million with expenditures being about $1.2 million. Moving to the left side of the snapshot, the goal here as of the end of September is to be either at or above 75%. The departments that are highlighted here in yellow are the ones that don't quite meet that goal, starting with the City Attorney's Litigation Budget. Obviously, we're defending several million in claims. For Information Technology, we have a lot of annual software lease and maintenance agreements that's due in the very beginning of the fiscal year. So this happens to them really sort of every year. There's also some COVID equipment purchases, all the, most of the technology upgrades and laptops that everyone's receiving for COVID. It's coming out of this budget. So there'll be a reallocation at some point, at some point to replenish this information technology budget, but it would typically be on the watch list at this point. For the employee benefits, we had to pay at the beginning of the fiscal year our annual death benefit and major disability payments. For engineering, there was a payment to Motorola for our radio maintenance contract. This is done every year, and these will sort of level out as we get further on in the year, so I'm not concerned about those. For MCP, it's right at 70, it was actually right below 75%, just barely on the cusp there, but that was because of the prisoner medical contract that was encumbered. So that is the snapshot. If there are any questions concerning the snapshot-
Councilor House?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question concerning that September surprise was a good surprise, but if we took that away, how is sales tax doing?
So for the general fund, we would actually be down. We'd be down about 11% in the general fund if it was not for that good surprise. And for the other local option sales tax fund, that fund would be up about 1/2%.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Davis?
Yeah, Ms. City Manager, Mayor Finance Director, I guess what I heard you say, I don't know what the expenses are, but it looks like the revenue, how you're projecting on there, short with property taxes and all that hadn't come in yet, but, you know, when you look at that, you have, you, you, it somewhat looks like you're going to have some cost to cover, but, and it looks like we've already had to cover some areas that maybe in last year we didn't have to do. But anyway, without further looking at it, I think that even though we got that surprise, it's right to, to, to recognize that that's only a one-time contribution. So, you know, am I right to say that that might be timely in a standpoint that maybe we can offset some of the potential other expenses that we cannot cover versus having to go into the, the reserve? Is that, is that reflective of right?
Well, I, I think we were doing, we are do, we were doing fine with our expenses even without the September surprise, because it all, I, I would say with revenues down, the expenses are also down, not in direct, in, in the exact proportion, but I think we were performing fairly well because revenue had been up for, I think, May, June, July, August, all of those months. And so I think we were doing fairly well, but I'll, I'll yield to you, Mayor Finance Director.
Yes, sir. You would be correct. I do believe that the expenses, in the General Fund in particular, were down about three percent. It's about three and a half percent, where the expenses for FY twenty-one are lower than FY twenty. And that also includes some expenses that we hope to be reimbursed for from the state in terms of all of the COVID-related purchases that departments are making.
Yeah, so, Councilor Davis, when you consider that, of course, in the first phase, reimbursements, that reimbursement from the CARES Act, we were reimbursed for public safety expenses.
Yes.
And which, I mean, which was very good. And so I, I don't know how that, those numbers work. When we were reimbursed, that money goes into the General Fund? What is?
Goes, it went into both, the General Fund and the OLOS.
She doesn't want me asking her these questions, you know, but.
Well, but if I could throw in one thing, I, I think the Council is correct in, in reminding us that that is a one-time blip. So it's, it's not something that can go towards operating expenses. It's something that needs to be focused on, a one-time expense, you know, maybe some capital issues. But, but overall, based on what I've heard, the Finance Director and the City Manager tell us is that even excluding the, the COVID money, the CARES money, which, which is certainly going to help us a lot, even excluding that, I think that because we planned so carefully going into this, this year with the pandemic, that the fund balance is, is going to remain in pretty good shape. Even if there's something that needs to come out of that for a one-time expense, it's still going to finish, we're still going to have a much higher balance than we've had in, in quite some time.
That, that's true, Mayor. And, and as soon as the audit is closed out, we'd like to bring an update, but, you know, I think, I think without getting into details, I think things are looking pretty good.
Well, and that's, you know, the, the, the news is encouraging, and regardless, like the Mayor said, I guess it's like you've got a little birthday present with a bow on it, or you found a twenty-dollar bill, once you spend it, it's gone. It's a one-time thing. Maybe things turn good. I know there's a lot of, we've talked about a lot of capital needs out there that, that might be a wise use at some point in time, but thank you for the report.
Councilor Thomas?
I know the City Manager will recall, and the former Finance Director will recall, I'm thinking about in two thousand and eight, we got a payment of about three thou, three million dollars because of a lawsuit that had been filed against somebody in Alabama, and we got three million dollars. And council decided just to hold on that. And what we, what council finally did with that money was when the OLOS passed, it authorized the Police Department and the other public safety departments to go ahead and start hiring the people, even though we wouldn't start collecting the OLOS until January of two thousand nine. And when we started recollecting that, it was repaid. And that, that was a surprise. We didn't, we didn't know we were going to get that at that time. I'd like to, in, in concert with what Councilor Davis has said and what the Mayor has said, is for us to look at this thirteen million in the same way, that we're, just because we've got it doesn't mean we have to spend it. And I, I know that, I have a feeling that our current Finance Director is a little austere also. And so that it will not be just a, oh, oh, yeah, let's have an ice cream party, you know? But when you started talking about that, Mr. City Manager, that's what immediately came to my mind, was that OLOS use of that money. But the, the condition was that when we started collecting, we would pay back into that, into that three million dollars. So I hope that we sort of look at this in the same way. It's a wonderful cushion to have in case we need it, in case, you know, things get to, well, I wanted to say go to hell in a handbasket, but I probably shouldn't say that at council. But, but to use that money for those kinds of things and not.
No ice cream parties.
Well, maybe an ice cream party at the end.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor.
Well, and she'll conclude with just a brief update on CARES Act.
Yes, sir. So most of the fa, front portion of this presentation you've seen, but just to reiterate the intent of the CARES Act funding, which is also the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Securities Act, which was passed and signed into law March the twenty-seventh, it retros back to the first of March, and so expenditures incurred from the first of March through December thirtieth are eligible under this funding source. So our Phase One allocation from the state was ten point two million dollars, which we've received in, in its entirety on the, on the second of September. And again, these expenditures had to be submitted to the state and expended by the first of September. Our Phase One allocation was based on our population, which currently is estimated at one hundred and ninety-five thousand, which is again, why, another plug to complete the census, because it matters. So our Phase Two and Phase Three balance from the state would be approximately twenty-four million. We have not heard from the state in terms of when they'll disperse this funding, when we'll be able to submit reimbursement requests. We'll utilize this money for continual expenses for the city, which will include, you know, our abilities to telework, you know, provide laptops and so forth, PPE sanitation, retrofitting of offices and buildings. We'll also use a portion of this twenty-four million for the community grants, for that program that was put out to the community. Now, as far as the CARES Act requests that were received by departments, the City Manager designated a team, which consisted of the both Deputy City Managers, Pam Hodge and Lisa Goodwin and myself, to go through line item by line item requests that were submitted by the departments throughout the city. And so we, we did that, went through every request, line item by line item, and decided if it was something that we had to have right away, that we could utilize some of that Phase One funding for. And so these requests are what you'll see today, so that we could go ahead and get those purchases in before the end of December. Obviously, the funding source at this particular point is coming from the.
And so why, why is it important to do it before the end of December?
Well, in order for it to count as a CARES Act reimbursable expense, it has to be expended and received before December thirtieth. And so, like, like I said, our plan right now is to just utilize some of that Phase One funding that we already have in the bank. But once we receive more information from the state regarding the Phase Two funding, then we'll certainly, we could most certainly submit these items under that reimbursement balance, under that balance, that reimbursable balance, if for some reason we can't capture it all using the same type of expenditures that we did for Phase One. So for the Civic Center, their request was obviously more than this, but this is what has been approved, is one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and it's for items. I'm not going to read everything that's listed in the PowerPoint. I did provide, and I do apologize for the small print, I'll send this to you electronically, but I did provide the line item request. It, it has the justification and everything listed by department that's also in this presentation. But for things like barricades and acrylic shields, backpack sprayers, hand sanitizer dispensers, walk-through metal detectors, you know, they're opening up the buildings to the public and using them for, you know, other types of events such as the council meetings, the court sessions and so forth. The movie screen package that we see here before us is also listed. Some of these items that's listed here, I will say, we have already procured, but they were approved, so to speak, so they're, they're listed in the presentation. Hand-held soap and towel dispensers for parks and recreation, hands-free soap and towel dispensers, for elections, wireless laptops and computers, and an OpEx rapid extraction device, and I believe that device is utilized to open mail-in ballots. For the Police Department, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand for laptops, PPE, and supplies to include mask gloves, sanitizer, disinfectant spray and wipes, a UV cleaning one that they can utilize in the back of the patrol cars as a sanitation device, Plexiglas dividers and cubicles in the public safety building, because right now there's no dividers between the desks that the officers sit at when they're actually in the building. Fire EMS, one hundred and two thousand for ambulance UV disinfection lamps. These lamps are supposed to kill the coronavirus. There's also a UV air system that also kills the coronavirus. Juvenile court with wireless laptop computers, glass partitions for the Clerk of Superior Court. The Trade Center, ninety-eight thousand dollars for touchless restroom cleaning system, for a commercial steam cleaner that sanitizes the, the chairs, the type of cloth chairs that they have. A water fountain conversion, convert items before the deadline. We're bringing this request to council, so.
And, and we'll bring that back on the next agenda for your approval. Wanted you to just see what, what we're looking at, and you, I mean, and you have, of course, the handout, but I wanted her to, I, I asked her the question about the December thirty-first deadline, because obviously you, you gotta not only commit the money, but have received the goods or services by that deadline for them to qualify as COVID. And they have not given us very clear direction on Phases Two and Three. And certainly, if we, we could sit around and just wait to, to get those instructions from them, but if we don't spend it in advance or do it in advance, and we can have it all wrapped up before December thirty-first, it won't qualify, and we don't want to get caught like that. And so this is just trying to be proactive and get out front of it, considering we've already received ten million dollars that's in the bank. So we will bring it back to you for your vote and consideration at the next meeting, but we wanted you to have the information in advance. Any questions of the Finance Director?
No, sir.
That concludes.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Yes, sir.
My agenda.
That may be the longest agenda you've ever presented.
It certainly was a lot, you know?
Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the Clerk's agenda, Items One and Two are resolutions to excuse Counselor Davis and Thomas.
Motion, motion from the Mayor Pro Tem is her second, and second from Counselor Huff. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no.
Item number three is a resignation letter from Mr. Timothy Weeks from his seat on the Crime Prevention Board. The council may receive it.
Move it, be received with regret from Mayor Pro Tem is her second. Counselor House, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion that the minutes be received by the Mayor Pro Tem is her second. Counselor House, all in favor of receiving the minutes, say aye. Any opposed, no. Aye.
Next, we have board appointments. Mr. Mayor, we have listed the Charter Review Commission. You provide fifteen nominees for this commission. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. The Animal Control Advisory Board, Ms. Shannon Emery was nominated to succeed Ms. Carla Anthony, and if there are no further nominations, she may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, second by Counselor House. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. She's confirmed.
Next, we have Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. Ms. Tracy Walton King was nominated to succeed Ms. Ashley Lee. She may be confirmed.
I took a motion approved from Counselor Huff, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. She's confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting. We have the Charter Review Commission.
Excuse me, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Counselor Garrett?
I just want to make sure, I think Madam Clerk has already added it, maybe on the physical agenda, but I, I do have a district date appointee for the Charter Review that should be ready for confirmation today.
Yes, Counselor Garrett, we do have that one listed.
Okay.
And I will go through the nominees that we have received thus far. For District Four, Counselor Tucker is nominating Melvin Tanner Jr. For District Five, Counselor Crabbe is nominating Mike Baker. For District Six, Mayor Pro Tem Allen is nominating Bradley Williams. For District Eight, Counselor Garrett is nominating Tyson Begley. And for District Ten, Counselor House is nominating Carmen Rice, if council wants to.
Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem to confirm, second by Counselor Garrett. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. They are confirmed.
Are there any further nominations? Here are none. For the Public Safety Advisory Commission, for the District Two Representative, Counselor Davis is nominating Pamela Williams to succeed Doleth Edwards Jr. She may be confirmed.
Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem is her second. Counselor House, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? She's confirmed. Counselor Davis?
Still awaiting nominee for the District Four Representative. Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations would be listed for the next meeting. Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, we are accepting nominations for the two-at-large seats. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, we have upcoming board appointments. We have the Airport Commission, Board of Elections and Registration, Board of Health, Board of Tax Assessors, Cooperative Extension Advisory Board, Hospital Authority of Columbus, Housing Authority of Columbus, Recreation Advisory Board, and the Tree Board. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. Can I get confirmation that the member of the Board of Tax Assessors cannot be renominated, or she, she has to step down because of limitations of her?
Counselor Crabbe, we did receive an opinion from the Assistant City Attorney, Lucy Scheftall, and she did advise us that the Board of Tax Assessors. Scheftall, and she did advise us that the Board of Tax Assessors, those members, are allowed to continue service and are not limited to the 2 terms. Therefore, when we bring this back for the next meeting, she will be listed as eligible to serve another term of office.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's because of the way the state law is written, Councilor Crabbe. The person can serve again, but it's your discretion whether you want to appoint them for more than 2 terms.
All right, Councilor Crabbe, do you have anything else? All right. I think we did have a request to go into executive session on real estate. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Right. Real estate acquisition and disposal.
All right. Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Councilor House. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no? All right, we're in executive session. All right, welcome back. We have been in executive session to discuss property acquisition. No votes were taken. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no? We stand adjourned. Thank you.